I think we'll go ahead and start the meeting. I appreciate everybody being here. This is great. What a great turnout. Thank you. On a beautiful evening in paradise. Beautiful evening. If you'd silence, you know, go ahead and silence your cellphones and that kind of thing so we don't get any interruptions. So we'll have an invocation. Bob Prevo will lead us with that and then we'll have a pledge of allegiance.
Please stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to guide the PID staff as we return our beloved town of Paradise to its beautiful splendor. Keep our workers safe as they solve the obstacles that have been placed before them. Thank you, Lord, for keeping our citizens of Paradise strong during this time of recovery. And as always, Lord, we keep in our prayers the 85 brothers and sisters who have been called home to your kingdom. In Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag in the back. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be safe.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Okay, we're gonna move right into the appointment of a director for division. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Excuse me.
Director Dan Hansen?
President.
President Marshall?
Here.
Vice President Bob Terbeau?
Here.
Director Kellogg?
Here.
Thank you, Georgie Ann. Yeah, so we have a vacant seat here that we hope to fill tonight. So we had five letters of interest, which is fantastic. Thank you for all the folks that have sent us a letter of interest. So I'm just gonna go ahead and we'll have, if it's okay, we'll have you come up to the podium and just give us a, you know, really short little brief synopsis of why you're interested to be on the PID board. And we have your letter, so we have, you know, a little bit of background, but pretty brief. So I'll go in order as it's in the order of the Jenna Packet. So Shelby Boston. Hi, Shelby. Hey.
Questions?
Yeah, we will have time for questions, yes, as well. Questions as well from the board. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shelby Boston and I am a resident here, obviously, in Paradise. So our water, our future, is the vision for PID. Without water, Paradise will no longer be a town. If you think back about the hierarchy of needs for human existence, I place water at the bottom of Maslow's hierarchy. It is more important than having a roof over your head. It is really everything about life. When researching the current board and the skills of the members, I believe I bring a different skill set. I have committed my career to being a public servant. As my letter of interest explained, I served the county of Butte as the Director of Employment and Social Services. I pride myself on being collaborative in nature, well-respected, and a strong advocate. My disaster response and recovery experience is a skill set that none of the other potential candidates have. I work alongside CALOES, FEMA, county officials, and the Town of Paradise officials on a daily basis. I also have extensive experience with RFPs, contract development, and oversight. Boards are responsible for being policymakers and providing oversight. I do not proclaim to be an expert in the field of water, but what I potentially bring to the board is a skill set that rounds out this board. I understand customer service and the importance of providing the service that residents need. In my current position within the county, I've been faced with many difficult budget issues and decisions, sometimes having to eliminate significant numbers of positions, and managing to ensure that entitlement services are still provided. Having to encourage staff to do more with less is always a challenge, but I believe that that's what this board and the staff of PID are going to be faced with in the future for many, many years to come. PID will be facing a very challenging future, and I believe my experience will be an asset to this board during this difficult road ahead.
Thank you. Questions?
Dan? I guess really the only one I have, your great presentation, by the way,
Thank you.
is actually one that was asked of me when I was standing there. It's a pretty significant time commitment.
Mm-hmm.
Where do you stand with that?
So obviously, I'm employed full-time. I have a job that definitely demands quite a bit for me, but I have an incredible executive staff beneath me. I oversee 645 employees. I'm the director of the largest department of the county. But my time and ability to commit to this board is, I believe I can achieve that without any challenge.
So understanding that, you know, most of all these are, you know, publicized, but we also have subcommittees and director meetings and things that sometimes fall during the week, sometimes during the day.
Right.
That's not an issue?
Not an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for applying.
Yes.
Welcome you here.
Thank you.
In your letter, you say you work in unison with FEMA. Can you tell us some direct projects you've worked with FEMA?
Sure. So as you might recall, in 2017, we had a variety of emergencies and disasters here in Butte County. We had actually seven activations where we activated our Emergency Operations Center. In my role as the Director of Social Services, I'm responsible for all care and shelter for the entire county of Butte, meaning that I'm in the EOC. I'm responsible for opening up shelters, coordinating with FEMA, CALOES, and Red Cross, who we ask to provide those levels of service for us. And in 2017, we experienced the Wall Fire, the Ponderosa Fire, as well as what we ended up calling the Wind Complex, which was the fire that ran through Bangor, which qualified us for FEMA assistance. During the recovery and during the actual response, FEMA was initiated, came into Butte County, and I steered the housing aspects of the disaster recovery response. And that continued for over a year of trying to pull down as much of the federal dollars that we were able to receive here in Butte County and did a lot of advocating, sometimes pretty strong advocating, and have continued to do that now in this most recent fire. And I appreciate being called aggressive, you could say, by FEMA.
I can imagine our hand out now.
Right, we do.
For FEMA.
And so I think the skill that I bring is I know the pieces and the challenges that you have to have a strong voice of advocacy when you're asking for more and you're setting, we're responding to an unprecedented event. And we have to push to get what we need to rebuild our community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill?
I've written down a couple. I've written down a couple of questions for you. I'm told I have a soft, easy voice, so I'll try to speak up tonight. What's the most important thing you can do for PID?
So I think the most important thing I can do is I definitely have a strong policy background and I have the ability to collaborate in ways in our community with the county officials as well as our partner agencies in a different way if called upon.
How would you improve PID?
So if I were to improve one aspect, I think it's very important to communicate with the public as much as possible and in a variety of ways. And not everyone in our community is tech savvy, and I continuously stress to all aspects of their recovery right now that we have to think about communicating in different ways. Not everyone has a cellphone. Not everyone is on the computer. And so the only way we can reduce anxiety and help residents feel included in their recovery is to communicate with them in a variety of manners.
How, what do you think of our financial health right now?
So I think that, like I shared in my opening statement, finances are a huge aspect of the recovery. Not any entity in this county has the resources needed to be able to meet the need. PID is one of those entities that doesn't have the means to be sustainable in the future with what's given, what's happened with the campfire. So I think having to look at a different business model is one strategy. I think that pulling on those federal and state resources is another very important strategy that we have to explore to the fullest extent.
And with your background and everything, your best way to improve our district?
Best way. So again, I keep saying the word collaboration, but it really is about finding the people who can bring the skills to the table. And we have a lot of informal leaders in our community and here within the formal structure of the board and PID. I think that since the disaster, many things have been done right. I think that help has been offered and help has been accepted. I think that the challenge will be in the future as it becomes not such an interesting disaster because there'll be another disaster that will take away interest from this disaster. And we have to be prepared and we have to really solidify those working relationships and the finances needed to support those in the future.
Thank you for your excellent answers.
Thank you.
Shelby, I just had one question similar to Dan's. You know, in the last two years, Butte County has had two major disasters, the Orville Dam and then the fire. And you just mentioned we could have another disaster at any time. We know that. Okay. So my question is, if we have another disaster in this county or in Paradise and you get pulled away, because you will be very busy person, I'm sure, I mean, can you truly devote the time to this position?
So again, the beauty of being the Director is I have staff below me who I can delegate to. And in every disaster, so after the Orville spillway incident, I spent almost an entire year training my executive staff to be able to participate in my absence. And since the campfire, they've gotten hands-on experiences, not just tabletop exercises. And so, yes, I would definitely have a responsibility to the county. That'd be my first and foremost. I won't lie or pretend. But I do have staff that are available to do the daily grind of being in the EOC. I wouldn't be expected to be there 100% of the time.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much for your answers.
You're welcome.
If there's any other questions. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. So Diana Seiler. Is Diana Seiler here?
Hey.
Hey. Hi, Diana.
Hi. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I just want to give you a little background about me and why I landed in Paradise in the first place. Back in the year 2000, my husband and I set out on a quest to find the best place to live in America. So we traveled basically from Maine to Hawaii and then back to California. And pretty much in about seven days, we decided that this is where we're going to be once we got to California. So since 2012, I've been a resident of Paradise. My home still stands. My background is that I'm a registered nurse. I graduated from Indiana Wesleyan University in 1996. During my undergrad studies, I attended the American Studies Program in Washington DC where I spent an entire semester looking at national and international issues. During that time, I had an internship with the National Center for Neighborhood Enterprise under the direction of Robert Woodson. Also, once I came to California, I attended Chico State University and completed the coursework for nursing leadership in a master's program. I am also General Electric Change Acceleration Agent. I am certified as a CAP agent. If you're not familiar with that process, what it does is looks at what are all the potential outcomes of a problem, and it brings the whole team together in deciding on the answer. Other roles that I've served in my career includes open-heart intensive care. If you want to talk about working under intense pressure, that's it. Nurses are great at working under intense pressure while striving for the best outcomes. I also served as a case manager. You can think of a case manager as an organizer extraordinaire, where the ones working behind the scenes to help patients have the best outcomes and connect them to the best services in the community. In 2010, for Feather River Hospital, I opened the Joint Replacement Center under the direction of a consultant and the leadership of the administrative team and the surgeons at Feather River Hospital. We improved our outcomes to such a point that we invited the Joint Commission to come in and certify our program, and we did attain that certification twice. Also because of our outcomes, we invited Blue Cross Blue Shield to certify our program, and we were given the highest distinction award. I have led numerous meetings with key stakeholders, including surgeons, administrators, and staff. I've developed my public speaking skills during that time. I also have excellent computer skills. I can do PowerPoint, Excel, Word. In the community, I've served the Red Cross. I am actually a zoning captain with Kyle at the Walt. I've looked at what Purdue University is doing for our town. I'm very interested in the resilience program and have been in communication with Andrew Welton on that. I helped them to get over 70 people signing letters of intent to participate in that program in the Town of Paradise. I've also helped others create a seminar for people whose homes are still standing in the Town of Paradise. I was responsible for creating a panelist group, which included an attorney, public adjuster, a contractor, real estate professional. So all in all, what I'd like to say is that as I look across the board and I see that you bring all of your skills to the team, you have people who have business experience, you have somebody who has water waste management experience, you have a former police officer. I'd like to ask you to consider a registered nurse. A registered nurse will work very well under intense pressure while striving for the best outcomes. We're also the most trusted profession in America.
Thank you. Well, any questions? Bill, would you like to?
What do you think of the financial health of PID?
I understand that that is definitely a concern. I understand that you do need to work with your different legislators. I do understand that at this time, it looks healthy, and I've been given that information from somebody that I trust, a leader in nursing. I think that there's much discussion that needs to happen.
What's your most important thing about you could help with PID?
What I bring to the table is the ability to look at everything objectively. I'm a problem solver. I'm a professional problem solver. I'm an organizer extraordinaire. And I work well with others.
How specifically could you improve PID?
I think I'd have to agree with Shelby that the communication is what's key here. When people don't know what they don't know, it's an odd place to be. When they know what they don't know, that's even more scary. And so communication is key, and it's very important for the PR for PID. You want to stay in a place where people will continue to trust you and that they will trust that you will bring them the product that they deserve. So again, I agree with Shelby, there needs to be a variety of mechanisms by which to communicate with people. And you are looking at a wide span of ages. You are looking at maybe an elderly population. That depends on reading the newspaper. Maybe you go to the community churches and you talk to the patrons there. Maybe you bring flyers. So I do believe that communication would be very important.
And the last one, how would you improve the performance of the district, anything at all?
Well, what we're in right now is very unprecedented. So, you know, I think that it's gonna take a lot of thinking and rethinking, thinking outside of the box. And I think that that's, that is what will help most.
Thank you for your very appealing answers. You are very much a people person. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
In your letter, I see you're meeting with Dr. Welton on March 25th. So I assume you met with him?
I actually did end up meeting with him after the PID public meeting at the CMA. Spoke with him briefly. Most of my communication with him has actually been through instant messaging on Facebook.
Okay. My question was gonna be, I mean, what did you, what was the outcome of your talk with him? What can you share with us that might be beneficial to our recovery?
Okay. I do believe that Andrew Welton has a very good vested interest in making sure that the Paradise residents have good, clean, safe water and that all approaches to that are taken. What I learned from Andrew is that the Paradise residents really need to be informed that their homes need to be evaluated for toxicity in their pipes. And so what I appreciate most about Andrew Welton's effort is that he is working on trying to get some funding through a foundation where that can be paid for, for the residents. Yeah.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dan?
First off, I know you and you don't know me, but I've been through your joint program, three complete joint replacements. Amazing program that you put together. We go through the debriefing ahead of time. You answer all the questions very thorough. And then the rehab and everything after was amazing. You made it, you had a fun program where there were simulated walks to Sawmill Peak and things of that nature. And it was just an amazing program, and I understand that that was in majority, you know, due to you. It was an amazing program and it's a feather in your cap. It was amazing. So as far as questions for tonight, it's the same as I've asked. It's a pretty substantial time commitment. Director Kellogg warned me, and it's far exceeded that. You know, there's the normal meetings, but the extra things, the interviews, the committees, all those things. How do those commitments work into your schedule?
Sure. So I do work full-time, but I do work from home now, which is a real advantage. I don't have any transportation time. I'm not sitting on any committees that would require me to be involved outside of my time at work or while I'm working. So I do have a wonderfully supportive husband who's here. There he is right there, Jess Seiler. And I have two sons at home, and they are all incredibly supportive of my interest in serving on the board. Time commitment would not be a problem for me at all. It may mean that I don't go snow skiing or I don't go bicycle riding, and that's okay. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to serve the residents of Paradise so that they have good water.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Yeah, your comment about thinking outside the box, that intrigued me. And you also mentioned in your letter, thinking outside the box in a unique way. Can you elaborate on that a little bit? It intrigues me just to see what you're thinking there.
Sure. So I can't really know what the answers are when we start talking about thinking outside of the box because truthfully, what needs to happen is we need to come together as a group and sit down and just imagine the most wildest opportunities and then put those in a hierarchy of what do we think is feasible? And then once we decide on that, then we need to decide how do we make that work and are we all in agreement? So it really is just an opportunity of brainstorming, bringing all the right people to the table.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we're going to Deborah McKee. Is this Deborah McKee?
I'm right here.
Hi.
I don't have to present. I'm just telling you who I am.
That's fantastic.
All right. Family moved here in 1971. I started, I went to high school, Paradise High School. When we moved here, it was young, a lot of young families moving in, a lot of retirement moving in. So I've seen this town grow. I saw it become a township. I knew one of the board members as they voted for the township. They didn't want to make it a city. It was gonna be a town. We wanted to keep it homey, welcoming, small, but it was gonna be a town. So I've seen this, okay? So I went to high school here, went to Butte College, went to Chico State. I left the area for about 10, 12 years. When I came back, it was still home. Really, this is home. This is home. So what I bring, I am, I've taught, I've been a teacher, a science teacher for 15 years. I'm now working for a nonprofit agency. Oddly enough, I'm selling education products now. This is my second foray into public service. My family has been involved in the businesses here since 1980 something. I can't remember how long ago it was. They had Miho's and then they had the Cantina's. So we know Paradise from the top to the bottom, from bottom to the top. I moved back because I wanted to be home, and when I saw it destroyed, I think this is a great time to start over, to make it better than what it was, but still make it I have a degree in communications. I'm a journalism major. I have a degree in science. I taught science. I have a teacher's credential. I think that's all I can.
That's great. Thank you. Bob, do you have any questions?
You've been here a long time, and thank you for coming tonight. Do you know a lot of people that work for the city, town council?
I probably do, but I don't know them as town council.
But you've been here a long time.
I've been here a long time. I know the family name. Let me put it that way.
Okay.
If you told me your name, oh yeah, went to school with you.
As you know, in the rebuilding process, we have water pipes in the ground and an unknown number of them are no good.
Right.
And it's gonna require a lot of work and a lot of money. What if we magically got enough money and the Town of Paradise said, "We want to work with you and just dig the trenches and star all over and put water pipes or PG&E cable and start from scratch"? Would you be willing to give time and work with the city since you're a communications major? It'd be a lot, it'd be a big job.
Oh, yeah. That would be an exciting.
Do you want to serve on that committee to?
That would be.
Get us back?
Yeah, I'm a writer. I can communicate in many ways that way.
Might be a pipe dream, but who knows?
That it is.
I've always said, maybe the Army Corps of Engineers will come in here and just rebuild the town for us.
That's.
Would you be willing to ask them?
I know. It was great before, but I think it can be better and starting over, that would be.
Well, we have an opportunity. I'm not saying it's ever gonna happen or we have the money, but this board could be, and this staff could be very busy here in the next couple of years.
I'm looking forward to something like that.
Okay. Well, glad to hear that. Thank you.
Dan?
You heard my question. I'm a broken record. The time commitment, how does that fit into your life?
I work fine. I have the capacity to work remotely should I need to. I have, I have my work cellphone should I have to answer questions or answer the phone. So whatever's needed, whenever is needed, I would be really good at scheduling everything. So that would be a big part of work and this, yes.
Thank you. Bill?
Financial health of the district.
Well, it was good before. We're gonna need a lot of help. And I think we have to be able to reach out to the resources and see if we can find some because this is a big job. We had done this piece by piece, bit by bit, over the course of many years, and now, now we have to get it all done sooner rather than in pieces. So we're gonna have to reach out for more resources. So we're going to have to reach out for more resources, like Shelby stated.
Your best way to improve the district, PID, any that comes to your mind? How can we improve your best, what's your thought is?
Well, as both women have stated, communication is a big part of it because we want everybody involved. Anybody who wants to come back, and we want everybody to come back, but obviously that's not going to happen. So anyone who wants to return to Paradise has got to be involved in the whole process of rebuilding. And the best way to do that is reach out to everyone. And yes, communicating maybe at different places, whether it be schools, churches. Have a representative from PID or from the council kind of explain where we are and hey, we need your help. Step up, please.
What's the most important thing about PID for the community? You're one of the owners of it.
Yeah. Well, you guys are going to be one of the most important parts of repopulating Paradise. So we're going to go from the ground up, literally. Communication, yeah. Communication is a big part of it. Reaching out. Letting everybody know what's going on all the time is always important, especially where, as a teacher, I needed to do that all the time. Administrators, parents, the students, you've got to get everybody involved. As long as you get buy-in, you're successful. I hope that answered what you needed.
This is sort of a play on the other questions. How would you improve specifically in something in PID's performance that you experienced as a customer with PID?
How would I improve it? Well, I like how you're telecasting stuff. More open. This is going to sound weird, but more women. I think we have an open mind. Not that men don't, but I think we have more creative and more open minds. So more women would be good. Just my opinion.
I want to thank you for your answers. I think it shows you're very concerned about Paradise.
That's what I offer, is passion.
Deborah, I just have one question. I got really excited when I read you were building science kits for kids. I love science. So my question is, what do you see with your science background? What do you see as some of the big challenges that we're facing here when you look at it through a science background?
Well, as we saw, when I first got here in 1971, there were streets that I didn't know existed. And now that's even more. So now you're finding homes, even where I was, as stuff burnt down. I didn't know there was some homes behind us. So you're finding there's places everywhere that we didn't know existed as far as I was concerned. So all these pipes that have led there, we're going to have, this is going to take a lot of, let's say, testing that's going to happen. So this is going to take a lot of testing, a lot of people involved with the testing and to know what exactly we're looking for, what's the toxicity level? How long is that going to take to, not so much cure, but get rid of? And is it the water? Is it the pipes? Is it certain sections? Is it the soil that got into the pipes? So this is the stuff that we're going to have to take an investigative viewpoint on because we don't know what happened. Well, we know what happened. We don't know how it's affecting the water and where. Right now, I'm living off of Neil Road. We're good there, but that's well water. So how deep did that go? And then where I was, we haven't tested that yet because we haven't got there yet. So where, how far, what tests do we need to take? And can we filter? Can we? So there's a lot of questions. What happens to science is more questions.
Very good. That's great. You're right. There's a lot of unknowns out there. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Okay. We'll move on to Tim Thomason. Tim? Hi, Tim.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity. This can be a little different. I hope I'm not stepping on toes, but I want to take a second and compliment Deborah. Deborah used to be, or I used to be Deborah's boss a number of times when we moved. What she didn't tell you, if it's all right, Deborah, is the science kits that she puts together and are being put together, for the most part, by developmentally challenged adults. And it is something to see, particularly from Deborah's ability to work with these folks. And you can carry this then on up to how can somebody work with somebody that isn't developmentally challenged? She did an outstanding job and I cannot begin to thank her and compliment her enough. She's always there, always reliable. She is a good vote, however. I've been thinking, as all of the candidates have stepped up and I thought, well, there goes that talking point. And oops, there goes another one. There's one common denominator that is on my list and that's communications. And apart from all of the other issues that drive PID, you've heard it from each one of the presenters and it's communications. That is an all-encompassing word. The ability to use that and direct it and get it to where it needs to go and be informative, that is the key element. And that is where I see the board providing direction, providing opportunity to staff and working themselves to develop a very solid communications program that goes from social media to the printed word wherever it appears. That's my toss on the communications. The other one that only was mentioned once, but I'd like to talk about it and that's thinking outside the box. In my career, and by the way, I'm semi-retired, I was a banker. I worked for major money center banks. I worked as a president, CEO of a small community bank. I learned a couple of things in that environment. One of them was thinking outside the box. I really believe you cannot teach thinking outside the box. You can talk about it. You can be around the table and brainstorming. But thinking outside the box isn't something that's saying, well, I'm going to go to work tomorrow and I'm going to think outside the box. It just doesn't work that way. Case in point. If you want to get your heart started, run a bank and have your first bank robbery. And because they're insured by the FDIC, the FBI is there, the police are there. I mean, everybody is there. And I was approached by one of the officers and asked me, asked what did I want to do with him? And him was a, this tall, pick a number, four, five, six years old. He was a purple pickle. We used exploding dye packs. This had purple. This kid was loaded with purple. I'm sitting there and I'm saying, well, what do you mean? He said, "Do you want to press charges?" And I'm thinking, that, you know, and you just don't think, well, let me get it back and I'll talk to the committee and we'll see what we want to do about it. It doesn't work that way. I'd like to say it was a brilliant idea. It just seemed to me good sense. And I think that's one of the key elements that anybody brings to the table. Is, I said, no, I said, and what he was doing, the bank robber got away. But what he was doing was picking up the money and throwing it in the window of his father's pickup truck. So he is accessory to the crime. I saw the Contra Costa Times newspaper lady was there. I said, "Come by the bank," and I just pulled this out, "come by the bank next week." And I got more publicity by presenting this six-year-old with a $100 savings bond, a would-be bank robber. I am paying him $100, giving him a $100 savings bond and $100 in cash to get new clothes. We made the inside cover of the Contra Costa Times. Cost of advertising was zip and we opened new accounts like you can't believe. To me, that's thinking outside the box. I didn't sit there and think, what am I going to do? If you have that capability, and it usually just comes and says, hey, why don't we do this? Now you've got a discussion point. So much for the thinking outside the box. The last item is a, in terms of my background and what I think I know what I would bring to the board, is my background for the last 25 years after running the bank for 10 years and we sold it, is working with troubled companies across the United States and Canada. What do I mean by that? Small to medium-sized companies, 15 to 25 employees. Many of them in a mode where they have one week of survival cash and after that, they're closed. And it is all crisis management. I would volunteer that PID is in a crisis management mode. That you can deal with, but it's not like the normal, and I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir here. It's not your normal routine with board meetings and decisions and so on. It's always something, where are we going to get the money? How are we going to do this? Do we have the personnel? And crisis management is critical. I bring to the table because that's all that I worked with for about 15 years. And turning companies around, I literally went into one where, as a consultant, and they said, "Here are the keys. We're leaving for the day. We probably won't be back tomorrow." It took me six weeks. We got it turned around. They doubled the size of the company. It's working through that. There are a lot of facets to that. And I know here, I'm speaking to the choir because you all have got a lot of issues on the table. What I bring is an understanding of finance, spreadsheets, legalese, compliance, all of that. I've been there and done that. In addition, I have, I tried to figure it out, but been on the board of directors of five, six different companies. And that's probably accumulated, a couple of them for 10 years. All of my movement out of that position was due to a move, a physical move into another area of the country. I understand what it is to be a board member. I understand what it is to provide support to staff. I mean, it is just so critical. I understand what it is that you need to do in order to follow the vision, follow what it is where you want to go and manage it in that direction without becoming a micromanager. And that's pretty much it.
Great. Well, thank you, Tim. Dan, would you like to start your questions?
Come on, give me a tough one.
So for starters, if you want to dye me purple like an Oompa Loompa, I'm not in. But what, do you have a vision? I know that you've attended a couple of meetings, the last couple of meetings and you've seen and heard a lot more than a lot of people have. What do you think? Where should we go?
My vision is Paradise the way it was when I first saw it when I came here. Now, that vision is easily said, but difficult to accomplish. For starters, it just kills me every time I see a tree cut down. It's a logging world and there's no stopping it. I'm understanding that. But you just don't go out and say, oops, there's a whole new tree and we're all good and it smells good and it looks beautiful. Working through that and getting the people and providing an environment where the people are saying, well, I'm not sure I want to go back to Paradise, you know, they don't even have a McDonald's, is going to be very, very difficult. And I think it is a unique opportunity for PID and I would hope to be a problem, a part of that and carrying it forward, of getting some excitement, getting some reason. Somebody touched on it here earlier about water and the importance of water. It's just a key, key element. And you've got to put all of those modules together and bring Paradise back to what it can be. It isn't going to happen overnight. We all know that. But what can we do? This is where the board gets into the strategic, longer-term, long-term planning and saying, let's, this is where we are, this is where we want to be. But how do we get out to the next level? How do we encompass this so that we can make this, not just we're back, but a viable, exciting community, which it can be? I don't know if that answered or not. I wondered. I just do a quick aside. What do I know about water? I know that when they first started selling bottled water way back when, I'm thinking, who in water's name is going to pay that kind of money when it's coming right out of the tap? But brought a full round. I worked in Central America on a very primitive island developing a resort project. The water situation, first of all, there was no electricity. 5,000 people, few generators, no electricity. And water was wherever you could find it. Well, it was surrounded with saltwater and a lot of the water, lots of rain, would be in coconut husks and stuff like that. There was no desalinization. Water was a real issue. And I had never even thought about, you know, water's there. It's always there. It isn't. And it is key, critical. And I was sitting here thinking about it. And I hadn't thought about Honduras in a long time. But when I first saw what issues there are with good water, it is critical.
It's opened everybody's eyes, I think, just simply that's something that we've taken for granted.
Right.
And we can't, it's a lifeblood. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Bill?
I didn't mean to stump you, Bill.
Who what?
I didn't mean to stump you. You usually are right there with the questions.
So actually, everybody gets the same questions. I just changed the order.
I'm ready.
So that's what I was looking at to see what my order was. That's all. What's the most important thing about PID?
The most important thing?
Yes.
That they provide, without question as to quality, good water.
Okay. How would you improve PID?
First thing I would do, and this is making a quantum leap forward, I would want to spend time, without abusing it, with each of the directors just to get a tempo for where we are, how you think, what's going on. Not to make up my mind, but to see where I can fit. I have some ideas. I do not want to overstep my bounds. I would use that then to move, you know, the company forward.
Since you've got a banker's background, financial health, how would you help us with our financials?
I've been listening to that and I've been listening to the answers. I guess the old, well, I get out the computer and get my spreadsheets going, so on and so forth. I think the secret to that is where the funds are coming from and what can you do to grease the skids in that area? And you, you know, you've got, you're dealing with FEMA. Are there other avenues to be taken? I think if so, they need to be evaluated and explored. The end result is that the financial condition, you can look at the balance sheet that was provided in the packet and so on. That's a moment in time, the income statement, that's a moment in time. Is it going in the right direction? What are the pitfalls going forward? Those are the kind of things that in my... Those are the kind of things that, in my past history looking at, uh, would evaluate and say, "Hey, wait, you know, that's great if this, this, and this falls in place, but what if this drops out?" You need contingency plans, you need to discuss it through that way. And I would hope in having the opportunity to meet with the directors and so on, two things would happen. They'd understand better where you can use me in, in committees and so on, and I would better understand what it is that is, you know, your big issue, or your big, "We want to do this" kind of thing. Now we can sit and work, and you use me as you see fit.
I'm going to give you a different question.
Yeah.
The last one, because you keep talking about this one thing. Under the law, we can talk to one other director. If three of us get together, it's considered a meeting, and we're very restricted on that. We can't communicate on the phone and try to do anything this way. This is by state law, so we don't, we're not buddies. We visit in the meetings when the issues are in front of us, and that's what we can do, but otherwise, we can't do a lot of what you're talking about. Now, what do you think about that?
Well, I understand the, the rule, and we have been there. Very sensitive, and if there's anybody that is sensitive to compliance and the law, I've been there, I've fought the battles, and it isn't fun, and you don't even want to open that door. When I said that, um, it's not unlike when one of the meetings that I was here, um, I think I was talking to Mark, and we were chatting back and forth and what, and I got a sense of what he was thinking about, so on. It, it wasn't Mark and, and three others all sitting around saying, "Well, let me tell you my," it was not a meeting. You can do it a one-on-one, but, uh, and that's quite truthfully how I saw it. I didn't see getting everybody together, because I don't want one listening to the other saying, "Oh, that's a good idea, I'll use his."
Well, thank you for your concern and your good background and all the hints you gave us on how we can do a better job.
Thank you very much.
Well?
I don't want to keep you long. Last bank robber I took to jail after a die pack was the only time in my career I saw every inmate in a jail laugh. It was the funniest thing they'd ever seen.
Yeah.
I used to call them stupid.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're all out there.
Is there a question in there?
I, I just got a couple of questions. I've seen your letter here. You're, you're a consultant to senior management of troubled companies throughout the United States. Is that your background? Part of your background?
Part of it, yes, that's true.
Or you wouldn't put it in here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let me represent to you, we have an excellent management and an excellent staff here, and I, and I think, I, I will, I will just make the assumption that most of the company's problems were senior management. It's terrible. Had problems.
There's, there is, there's, there's no cookie cutter company.
Well, it wasn't, they didn't go out of business due to a natural disaster, right?
But they, they all have, if it's in personnel, if it's in finance, if it's in production or whatever, it's the theory of constraints, you got to.
I'll submit to you here that what, what happened here was a national disaster, not a, not a lack of.
Oh, no, I wasn't even, I, I've just called it, it's a crisis.
Is, do you have any experience in dealing with natural, national disasters? Natural disasters where, you know, we're trying to.
Right, right, right. Uh, no.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'm thinking about that. There's got to be one in there somewhere, but.
Okay.
It's okay, most of us didn't.
Tim, and I have one, one last question for you. Uh, it looks like you're already on four boards, affiliation with four boards.
Right, well, not, if some at the same time. I don't know if you're the private industry council in Contra Costa County.
Yes, I'm familiar with it, yeah.
I went through the chairs, was vice chair and then chairman for two years.
Okay.
That's exciting, because you got 15 board members that are private sector and 15 that are public sector. Throw a union in there and throw a private in, and it gets very exciting. I was on YMCA Board of Directors.
But you, that's past tense, or you're still on those boards?
No, uh, no, I'm not on, on any board at this point.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to mislead you.
No, that's, that's great, okay.
YMCA actually had a crisis. That was, and that's another story for another time, but.
Okay, so a lot of experience with boards and, uh.
Yes.
Okay, very.
Yes.
Very good. And you know how sometimes there can be disagreements and, uh.
Contentious.
Possible.
Disagreements is a good, is a good word.
That's a good way to put it, disagreement.
Because many times it's just a matter, and we go back to communications. I hear you saying one thing, and I hear you saying the exact same thing, but it's going in the opposite direction. How can that be?
So you think it can be a consensus builder?
I'm a good listener for, for, for situations such as that.
Okay.
I also know I probably talk too much, but I try to listen, and I, I evaluate, and if there's something, I, I tell you one thing that I do deal in without question, is black and white, yes and no, always, maybe, sometimes, we'll see, are all weasel words, and they make me crazy. So if we're, if, if, you know, I'll get back to you, that's fine, when? You know, and you, I think I picked that up, you know, "Can I come in and get my loan? Oh, we'll see." Doesn't work that way.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Tim. Thank you for your responses. Okay, and our last candidate, Timothy Tom, or excuse me, I'm sorry, John Wolfe. Tim, you had your resume on the back of that, and I was going right to it. Hi, John.
Hi. First, I'd like to thank you for considering me for the board for Division III. I think I'd be a very good candidate. Unlike everybody else, I've got extensive, um, background in construction, um, mainly in large construction, building hospitals, Feather River Hospital, BM1, the Rural Health Clinic at the edge of town, that was my project, I built that. I've done several medical centers, uh, hospitals, worked, um, on several large hospital projects, Ride Out Hospital in Marysville, UC Davis Hospital, and I've had extensive working with building inspectors, OSHPOD inspectors, IORs, um, fire marshals, PID, Cal Water. I've worked with all these entities, subcontractors, in keeping everybody together and on the same page at different times that we have to be, and, you know, keeping everybody, um, to where we could actually get, um, things done and, you know, keep the peace, so to speak, you know, find common grounds. Um, in March, well, I was working for Modern Building Company doing these large projects. In March, or, I'm sorry, in January, I retired from Modern Building. You know, I wanted to rebuild Paradise. I felt that this was where I needed to be. Our house burnt down. My wife and I have lived in the same house for 35 years, uh, in Division III, same place, and raised our family here, and I have strong ties to the community. Um, I was on the board for Feather River Hospital trustees for eight years, um, worked with them on several different things and know what it takes to work together on the boards. Um, we had to, you know, you, I know you have to compromise and work together to get things done. You can't just, you know, my way or the other, you got to work to get things done. Recently, in March, I went to work with Trilogy Construction to help rebuild Paradise. The rebuilding houses, which is a big step down from building hospitals and medical centers, it's a lot less pressure. So that's why I believe I could be a good candidate for, um, PID board. I believe I do have the time to help, and this is my community. We've been here for 35 years. Our house didn't fare well. It did burn down. We are going to rebuild in the same place, not the same house, but the same place. That's one of my wife's constrictions. If we're going to stay here, we're building our house on our property. Thank you so much for taking the time to consider me for the board position.
Well, thank you. Bob, do you have a question?
Thank you, John. I saw on here you were a project superintendent, project manager for large construction, uh, dealing with medical centers, hospitals, et cetera. Were you involved in, in the design of the water systems, and you know the requirements for quality and so on and so forth?
Yes.
Okay.
I worked with, um, well, with general construction, um, design-build projects, where we had to do the on- and off-site, um, water tie-ins and design of the onsite water and design for the, um, you know, tie-ins.
And in doing that, you worked with PID? You worked with PID to get that?
Yes, I worked with PID, well, at the Rural Health Clinic. I also built the cancer center where we had to do the tie-ins with PID, so I worked with PID on those projects.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
What's your best way to improve PID's performance?
Best way to improve PID performance? I've heard that question four times now. Four times, I've tried to figure out how I would improve the.
Oh, so you have an advantage in a way.
Yeah. Every time it comes up, I'm wondering, how would I be able to improve it? I think with my knowledge of construction, which I, I don't believe anybody here has the construction, now that Dan's left PID, um, knowledge that I would be able to bring PID and help with the rebuilding, because right now, that's what it's all about, is we got to rebuild.
Financial health of PID, what do you think of that?
Um, I picked up all the recovery plans, and I've read through them all, just like a spec book, you know, at night you read through them and try not to fall asleep, and after looking at them, I'm fearful for the financial stability of PID on seeing what the costs are to rebuild, and it's going to be an uphill battle.
Yeah, I agree with you. Um, let's see. Okay, the most important issue in your mind for PID besides the financials?
Most important thing is get potable water to everybody, not just, uh, houses that are standing now, but to all the residents that we hope to rebuild up here, so that we can rebuild Paradise. I know Paradise can be a great town again, it was before, and it can be again, and that's why I've, I've stepped aside from what I was doing for Paradise. So it's getting potable water to Paradise is the main goal for PID right now.
I clap my hands too, too busy trying to figure out my own notes. Okay, anything else you want to add? Because I think I've doubled up on you already, um, questions about, um, since you have the construction background, have you seen our crews work, and do you think there's anything we could possibly do to improve that?
I have seen your crews work. I've worked with your crews, and I've known people that worked for PID, several actually, you know, that have worked with PID, and I must say, PID does have some really good employees working for them, and I really can't think of what they can do to improve. I mean, on tie-ins that we've done, they have come through and worked side by side, and we were able to get the projects completed fast.
Thank you very much for your knowledge and sharing it with us.
Thank you, Bill. Dan?
Well, I got, I got nothing. You've answered everything that I like to ask. So I really don't. You've pretty much covered everything. I do appreciate your passion.
Thank you.
You're, so far, you're the only one that got applause midway through. So, um, I, I appreciate your passion and your dedication.
Yeah, John, I just was wondering, you, you're talking about rebuilding Paradise. It sounds like you're going to be really busy rebuilding Paradise, um, and your own home as well. Uh, you think you, you really think you've got enough time to, to spend, you know, Dan kind of illustrated a little earlier, it takes up a lot more time than you think. I mean, going into this thing, I think we all had an idea, but then it all changed.
We were wrong.
Oh, yeah, most definitely. I say, um, building custom homes, building a hospital. Hospitals take a lot of your time, and that's why I stepped down from modern building. I should be, um, building inlet. I had projects out that I could have built, but I said, "No, my town needs me." And so, yes, I definitely have the time.
Okay.
To work with PID and doing everything they can, and the company that I'm working with, Trilogy, if I need to take time to help PID, they will allow me that time to work with PID. That's some of the things that when I went in is, they know that my passion is to rebuild this town, not just rebuild Trilogy.
Great, thank you.
I got a question.
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
So with that in mind, um, you are not the licensed contractor, you are an employee now?
Yes, I'm a.
Okay, so there's not a conflict of you being a.
Project manager for, um, for Trilogy.
Okay.
I don't do any of the finance work or anything. They get the jobs, I just make sure that it's ran.
Okay, that's all.
Correctly. If any time there would be, um, a conflict of interest, need to vote, I would step aside. I wouldn't, um, vote, you know, if there's a conflict of interest and anything to do with our board meetings, if it's to be kept amongst the board, that's where it's going to stay. I won't, you know, my integrity is where I'm at.
Fantastic.
Strong ties with my church, and I'm on a board there too, so, but that's volunteer board, so.
Very good. Thank, thank you very much, John, for your answers. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, you're good?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss you? I missed you, yeah, I'm sorry, I totally forgot.
He's so quiet.
I really, I think I already asked him a question. Did you?
I thought he did, but I.
You did? Okay, well, thanks for that.
Okay. Thank you, John. All right, so now we're going to mulch this over a little bit, and we got fantastic candidates. Thank you very much, uh, great response, and, um, going to be some tou, a tough decision here tonight, so, but we do have to make a decision tonight, so. Uh, so any, any discussion, board members, any thoughts? Will we open nominations, or do you like just nominations? Yeah, anybody you'd like to make a nomination?
I'll nominate John Wolfe.
Okay, John Wolfe, do you have a, oh, it's a second for John Wolfe?
It's a second, huh? Yeah.
Any other nominations? Bob? Dan?
I'll nominate Ms. Boston.
Okay, we have a nomination for Ms. Boston. Okay. Any discussion points?
We need a second.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Uh, the nomination for?
Boston.
For Boston?
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, do we have a vote? Can I have a vote on the?
Well, you've got two open motions on.
Are there two open motions right now? Okay.
Yeah, so you, you made one.
We need a second for the, the other one?
One died without a second.
There was a second?
There was no second.
Oh, okay, then you have one, you have one motion. I thought there was a second.
Dan made a second on, on Wolfe, and I made a second on Boston.
Yeah, I think you had a motion and a second on.
I didn't either, yeah, okay. Okay, so, okay, so we got two candidates now.
Well, can we ask for Jana what she has?
Oh, first one, first nomination.
Correct. You have in your agenda the.
You have a nomination, the first nomination of.
What page is that?
John Wolfe.
It's page five.
Director Hanson.
Okay, okay.
Take a vote on that.
Take a vote on that first, okay? Do we have a, can I have a vote, a roll call vote on that? All those in favor of John Wolfe?
You want to do it, well, we'll call.
Oh, okay, roll, roll call, yes, please.
Director Hanson?
Hi.
Director Podo?
No.
Director Kellla?
Yes.
President, um, Sulu.
Sulu, no.
Four, four side dies.
No, no motion.
All right, it's, it's, for a lack of majority, so then.
Well, we knew it was going to be tough tonight. We knew we had some outstanding candidates. Now you see how really tough it is. We used to have a guy on the board, he loved to have ties, because we have to go on with the next one, and we'll come back if we don't get a majority on that.
So the second motion we have, Director Podo nominated, um, Boston, seconded by Director Kellla.
Yeah, we'll call. Yeah, roll call.
Roll call with the Director Hanson?
No.
Director Podo? Director Kellah?
Hi.
President Solich?
Yes.
Thank you, all the candidates and the participation, we really appreciate it. Yes, we have to swear her in right now before she can sit on the board.
Shelby, sorry? To take the oath of office, maybe please do your...
I, Shelby Boston, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
You don't know what you're getting yourself into here. Okay, no, fantastic, congratulations. Okay, we're gonna... We're gonna move to Agenda Item 12A. Gonna skip ahead a little bit so we can get right to the meat of the meeting tonight, second part of the meeting tonight.
Public comment?
Oh. We'd like to take a five-minute break, if that's okay? Maybe even 10. How about 10 minutes? Is that okay? 10 minutes, so we'll reconvene about, what, 7:53?
Just the general public comment.
Mic check, one, two. Testing, one, two. Hello, hello, howdy, how do you do? Check, one, two.
Okay, we're gonna get going in here. I may be able to take a shower. I came out of the shower covered in red wraps, and now I have this on my head and everywhere. We still waiting on the bathroom? In contact with the...
All right, let me get back to the right page here.
Okay, folks.
Still not working.
You overachiever, you studied ahead, huh?
Okay, we're gonna... I forgot about public participation, so before we go to 12A, is there anyone who'd like to speak on anything that's not in the agenda tonight? Any... Anything you'd like to talk about that is not in the agenda or Agenda Item tonight? So feel free to come up to the podium, come on up. Just give us your name, if you don't mind.
Yes, my name's Tony Ebert.
Hi, Tony.
Hi, I had a question. I called today in reference to, and I don't know if it's applicable for this evening, there's a Paradise Lake.
Paradise Lake, okay.
I understand that it's opening up tomorrow.
It is. It is opening up tomorrow.
The lady who answered the phone wasn't sure how long it was gonna be open, are you gonna have annual permits, you know, that kind of thing.
It's actually on the agenda. It is, yeah.
It's a committee report, I can answer the question. Right now, we're gonna open it up from Friday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and we're gonna close it on the weekdays for staffing, to allow staff to have time off and for a day for cleaning. We're having a fish plant yesterday.
Today.
Today. And it'll be open tomorrow, so it'll be... It will be open on a Thursday, but that'll be the one Thursday it's open. We're not selling annual permits right now, because we're in the transition of talking with the Parks and Rec, of transitioning some of the management over to them to allow them to control the management of it, so that we can focus on the water side and they can focus on the recreation side. And so we didn't wanna sell annual permits and then have to try to somehow funnel money back and forth between them. So right now, we're just doing it on a daily access, so if you wanna go up and park, it's $3, stick your money in the 10, and boating's 10, 10 bucks. So if you wanna go up and boat, we're just gonna charge you 10 bucks.
Yeah, I was curious, when they said $10 each time for the boat? I got kayaking last year, I'm a new resident, and did a lot of kayaking, and I'm going, that's gonna get pretty pricey.
Yeah. Great. We could try to work with you on making it, you know, as convenient as possible under that type of thing, so.
Will you be looking for volunteers to help out at all? I would be willing.
Uh, we're in with the talks with the Parks and Rec that has been brought up as a volunteer, being volunteer run or some type of volunteer spots up there for them to be able to staff with volunteers. Greg would like to say...
Yeah, I'm the lake patrolman up there, I recognize you. I was gonna petition for it to... We haven't made this an official thing, we didn't actually officially enclose the lake, we just knew we had to because of emergency. To possibly make the daily something like five, rather than 10, it would be more powerful for people, because $10 a day is hard, real hard to swallow. But that's my two cents, so.
That's a board decision, though.
Sure.
I heard a couple of months ago that there was a possible problem with the water in the lake, is that still...
Yeah, we've... All of our testing from the lake, from sediment and runoff has been excellent, so we've had no problems with any of our watershed at this point, and any of the treated water has been excellent since, even before the fire and after the fire. So, lake-wise and treatment-wise, we're in great shape.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony, we'll see you at the lake.
Anybody else like to speak?
Quick question. Like I said, I got the spec book before, and so I was reading the plans, the recovery plans, and one of them is for 53 million, seven... For 53 million, 300,000. Word for word, the exact same plan, it's for 49 million, 700,000.
Okay.
Word for word, everything. So I was wondering...
Can you save that for Sammy and Water Works? They're gonna be talking here like in about five minutes on this. Is that okay, John? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heidi Lang, and I just thought I would pose while we had the opportunity to hear from all of these incredibly qualified candidates this evening, that while Shelby was appointed, which is fantastic, I wonder if the board might consider a way of utilizing the other skill sets that were represented in those candidates, some sort of subcommittee?
That's a great idea. We have committees that need members, so... Oh, yes. Yeah, thank you.
My name's Steve Colleton, I live at 1552 Forest Service Road, and I just want to take this opportunity to commend this board and especially your staff. I've had a chance to know some of the people out in the field, and like John had said in his presentation, they're excellent workers, are doing a commendable job in really horrendous and difficult times. And to Kevin Phillips, he's just, you know, he's been phenomenal. One of the things that us citizens have been suffering from is a lack of information. And at least Kevin stood up at a council meeting not too long ago and said, "Here's what we know today. It might be different tomorrow, but this is what we know today." And I appreciate the honesty and the hard work y'all got ahead in front of you, so just wanted to say congratulations, and I appreciate PID.
Thanks, Steve. We appreciate you too, Steve.
Feel free to come every week, Steve.
I'm Deborah Matthews, my house survived as well as my sister's did, and we're very appreciative of the free drinking water. However, the last couple of weeks, they've come in the little teeny tiny bottles, and everybody I've talked to finds that very annoying, and we're not... If that's all we can get, we're happy to have that, but if there's any way you can get, or maybe give people an option, because I know some of the volunteers that are putting that in your car or having back issues because of some of them regularly...
Right.
If you had the pint bottles, I'm strong as an ox, I can put them in my car myself if you give me the bigger bottles, so you might wanna have some of both kinds available for... To give people a choice, but otherwise, we're happy with the little ones, so.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that we were going to the little ones, so...
We... Just to let everybody know, the drinking water has been 100% donated to the district from day one, from Crystal Geyser and Convoy of Hope, and so a lot of times, we don't have choices on when the bottles come, but we can see if maybe... And those are about loads and when they come out, so we can see if maybe they can get some of the standard size in there and maybe have a variety for some people.
Variety pack?
But we just wanna give that... Our appreciation for that complete donation to that bottled water for all of our customers.
Yeah, thank you for that comment.
I'd just like to say something to what you were talking about. I came up with kind of a solution, shall we say, through Walmart. Purchased a five-gallon water jug, and they have a wire stand that rotates the bottle about like this with a valve head on it. And by doing that, you can take it over where you pick up the water from, they will fill it up from their tank they have, you can take it, rotate it, put it next to your sink, and be able to turn it on and use both hands to do what you're doing, either with cooking or washing your hands. And you don't have to do the little bottles, like you were saying, rotating over, trying to do whatever you're trying to do. So they're inexpensive, it was like, I think, $12 for the stand, and the bottle's like 20 bucks or something like that.
Okay.
But that's a good way of being able to have fresh water available without having to do the bottle.
No, the problem wasn't... Because I have a camping jug with a spigot, and I do the same thing. The problem is having to do 70 little ones.
We'll get you some little stands, okay?
And one other question I have. I listened to the candidates, I listened to the questions, and they... The question was, what is your most important thing for PID? And my vision on this, listening and reading and all this, is the thing that I'm most concerned about is the fact, and I understand you guys are on skeleton crew, you're running on reserves, you have virtually nothing to work with for income coming in, is the fact, is Cal water a problem for them trying to take over the lake and take over PID in this case? That's the thing that concerns me the most, because if they get hold of that, we're screwed. Thank you.
Well, Cal water's actually been a very good partner with us in helping us in the recovery process, so I'm gonna give a coup de thème.
Yeah, they've been helpful. Also...
I've heard from many, many people that have been here, you know, since the 60s, that one of the... If you guys have fought tooth and nail to make sure that they don't get hold of the lake and take over you guys, and that's what I'm concerned about most.
Yeah, so one... I'll answer two questions. First question, you... We have a five-gallon filling station at the treatment plant, too, free?
That's what you have.
Okay, okay, good. I wanna... Yeah. And second, one of our goals as PID management and this board is to make sure PID is in control of all of our assets, and that we're in control of this area, and we're going to be the water provider for Paradise from today until the future. So that's a major, major thing for us, yeah.
Thank you, Kevin.
Is there any consideration made to, with all of these little bottles we've got, to recycling?
I think they're...
Yeah, and I know, but just to, given that gets your bottles of water at a location...
Right.
Could you just take the little baggie of all the other bottles back and then take another?
Yeah, that's a great idea. We had talked about that, having a can at the bottle distribution spot for returns. I don't know if they're doing that down there at the church or not.
I can talk to Northern Recycling to see if we can get that something.
Yeah, we can look into getting something down there, then you could just, you know, bring things back. Okay, very good suggestion, thank you.
Actually, I've been saving my sister's and my bottles, I take them down to the recycling in Chico, I've made like almost $120 worth of...
There you go, there's money to be made, okay.
Maybe we ought to start gathering.
We actually... Anyone else? Anybody else like to speak? Okay, thank you. I think we'll move to Item 12A, and Water Works Engineering.
Yeah, so Sammy Cater and Michael Lindquist from Water Works Engineer are here to present. As we like to call it, it's the plan, but maybe the plan with some value engineering in it. It's the updated plan of what we're going for with today, and just like Steve said back there, this plan is fluid. We're learning things every day as we meet with Cal OES and FEMA, and the Department of Drinking Water, and EPA, and all the other agencies that are involved in approving this plan. And what we're trying to do is not just sit back and look at the plan and just move forward with no talks of efficiencies or looking for other areas to make sure that we can get people back in water as quickly as possible, but with the number one concern is public health and safety for our customers. So we know time is an issue, but we also have to balance that with the public health and safety, and I think this plan really does a good job of that. So right now, what I'm gonna do is turn it over to Sammy. Also, I wanna let everybody know, he's presenting this plan today for the board. We, as a crew, are going to go out and start pilot testing this plan tomorrow. And we're going to move forward, and there's gonna be gains that we're going to see through this plan, but we're also going to make sure that the plan works out in the field. Everything always looks great on paper, but we're gonna make sure it works good in the field before we go full bore into getting mass crews up here or mass... Going mass full bore. And we're gonna have a community meeting after we pilot test this to present to the public, to show them what we've done, but also to inform them of what we've done. And that, I believe, is May 14th, Mickey's not here, over at the CMA Church, that we'll be presenting this plan again to the public, or any updates to the plan to the public, to make sure the public is informed and they have an opportunity to comment and to question it. So that's where we're at, and I'm gonna turn it over to Sammy.
Okay, I'm Sammy Cater, of Water Works Engineers, I've met all of you before except for you, so.
Nice to meet you as well.
And it's good to see everyone from the public here, appreciate you guys coming to listen to some engineering talk, because we don't usually get people on. So what we're looking at tonight is the Water System Recovery Plan Draft from April 12th. So normally, when we're doing engineering work and we're developing master plans and facility plans and things like that, we do a lot of work, and we make... Get the plan perfect, and we finalize it, and then we present it to the public. And this is a little bit of a different case here, because this is really an evolutionary plan. So this plan was started before you hired us, you know, the staff here started working on the playbook, and what are we gonna do once the contamination was found, how are we gonna deal with this contamination? And they did a lot of really good work. And then we were brought on board, and we joined the team, and with them and Cal OES and FEMA and the Division of Drinking Water and Professor Welton and a whole host of different inputs, evolved that plan into this draft. And one of the things you were pointing out, inconsistency between the paper in your lap and what we're presenting tonight, and I think the paper in your lap is wonderful night, it was April 12th. I'll look at it, and we'll sort it, but my point to that is that this is a plan that's constantly evolving. And today, we met before the board meeting for an hour and talked about some other evolutions of this plan as we go forward into the pilot testing phase. So it's a little bit of engineering in public, which is not our normal way of doing business, and so it's going to be, I think, in some ways, educational for everybody about the engineering process and about this process, because it's gonna be done in this transparent manner. But at the same time, you're gonna see that we're gonna present a plan tonight, and then we're gonna come back at the public meeting, and that's going to have changed. And then three weeks later, it's going to have changed. And two weeks after that, it's gonna change a little bit more, because we're dealing with a problem that is not, you know, hasn't been defined before, there aren't... We haven't done this before, nobody has done it before, it's an unprecedented scale... done this before, nobody has done it before. It's an unprecedented scale of a contamination in a public water system. And the process by which we bring this system from where we are today to full confidence, potability to everybody involved, is a process that all of us here are going to develop as we go. And we're happy to be your partner in that, and we are going to provide all of the technical work we can to make that happen. But it is a partnership between everybody in this room to sort out how we move forward, and we all get comfortable with the water coming out of the tap of safe to drink. All right? So I'm going to review, this, this report is 74 pages long, and I'm going to go over the eight page summary. And if anyone's interested in any of the other 66 pages, we can discuss it. So in general, the report has all of the steps in the recovery plan detailed, in terms of why we made the decisions and how we intend at this point to implement those steps in the plan. And those are all summarized in the summary, which is the first document in the recovery plan. It is already, was already part of the board agenda for tonight. So it is available there through the board agenda, if you'd like to review it there. I don't know if we'll have it somewhere else as well.
It'll be, it'll be on a public document on the recovery site.
What I might do for everyone's eyes, because mine aren't as good as they used to be either.
Sigh of relief.
This might seem redundant, but, but a little bit of what we wanted to do here is to just make sure that everybody's on the same page. And there's a lot of audiences for a report like this, and some of them haven't been involved in Paradise, and some of them are funding agency people that are coming in from another jurisdiction. And so we wanted to sort of, in one place, give a brief summary of what happened. So we talked a little bit about what happened during the fire, what we suspect happened during the fire. There's about a million feet of pipe in the system, there's over 10,000 service laterals. And those service laterals were somehow contaminated, some number of them with volatile organic chemicals, which include benzene and benzene-like compounds. A lot of times, you'll hear people talk about benzene contamination, because it has started to look like it might be an indicator species, which is, you know, if it's there, then other things are there. But if it's not there, other things are also not there. We can use it as a, as a sort of a flag for what might be in the water. So you'll hear people say benzene contamination. But what we're really talking about is a suite of volatile organic chemicals, and there have been other chemicals detected that are similar in nature. A little bit of science for... This is a new science. There are professors from a lot of universities, they're very interested in studying this science and taking the science forward. We, as a water utility, have to live it right now, though. We don't really have time for the science to develop, because we are going to be at the leading edge of that science. What we know, or what we think we know, is that during the wildfire, especially in conjunction with depressurization, contaminants can get drawn into the water distribution system. We learned that a little bit in Santa Rosa, learned it here. There's been a couple other cases where the fire, and again, especially combined with when the system drains and depressurizes, can pull some contaminants into the system. Some of those VOCs can end up, and this was corrected after this went out, absorbing, not absorbing, into the, soaking into the walls of the pipe in the water distribution system. It can happen with any type of pipe, but especially, it seemed to be prevalent in the service laterals, the polyethylene service laterals that feed houses, more so than the main lines in the streets. Not to say, most of the time, anything you say on this project, you have to caveat, but not to say that it couldn't happen, or, you know, there's a, there's a lot that's unknown. Running water through the pipe generally doesn't result in very much of that chemical coming off of the pipe wall and going into the water. It's when water sits in a pipe over time, that then that, those VOCs have time to desorb from the pipe wall and enter into the water. So stagnation is an important thing. There have been a number of studies, laboratory studies done on, believe it or not, stagnation of VOC-contaminated water in polyethylene pipe. And there is a lot of science out there on that subject. It's not necessarily conclusive, but from all of that science, and we've gone through and reviewed and discussed with experts like Mr., or Dr. Welton, right now, 72 hours of stagnation time in a pipe seems to be, give us a high level of certainty, that if a sample from the water pipe, or the water sat in there for 72 hours, is taken, and it comes up non-detect for the chemicals in question, then it will remain non-detect, and that pipe is not contaminated. If you do it after four hours, there's still a chance that that chemical hasn't had a chance to desorb yet into the water, and it could be in the pipe wall. Now, between four hours and 72 hours, there's a lot of argument between PhDs. But we feel like, as engineers, we try to parse through all that, and we're confident with 72 hours at this point. And just a little note on MCLs, that's a term that we use a lot, but maybe everybody doesn't use a lot, maybe now you're just really too familiar with it. But it's a maximum contaminant limit. MCLs are set by the EPA based on a lot of epidemiological science and studies to see the effects of these compounds on human health. And so an MCL is a concentration at which a chemical will have, above which a chemical will have an adverse health effect on a human. And so there's the different MCL for every kind of constituent. In the case of benzene, the California MCL is one part per billion. And the detection limit, the best a laboratory can do is detect a half a part per billion. So that's important, but they're very close, the detection limit and the MCL. In this summary, we have this figure that shows the brief anatomy of a water distribution system. And we did this so that when we're talking, and when everybody's talking about the pipes in the ground, we can use common language. Generally speaking, mains feed the meters that feed houses through service laterals. So water comes down a main that's in a street, it goes down a main that's in a smaller street, there's a saddle, the service saddle, and a corpse stop, which is a valve on the service saddle. A service lateral feeds a meter, and the meter feeds your house. And a lot of people see this part from above grade, they open a meter box and see a meter, and there's a pipe that comes out of the ground. This is what's going on underground. And we'll talk about service laterals, which are these small diameter pipes that feed the meters. And we'll talk about mains, which are the larger diameter pipes that are in the, in the middle of the street generally. At this point, the basic idea behind this recovery plan is we sample all of the service laterals and mains in the system for VOCs. We do that, that's going to eventually be 20,000 samples. There's over 10,000 service laterals. We're taking main samples periodically on the length of the million feet of mains. And then we're also sampling at hydrants and other distributor system appurtenances. Once we test, we would replace contaminated service laterals. So if we, if we find contamination above the MCL on a service lateral, we pull that lateral out of the ground and replace it with a fresh, clean one, and flush contaminated mains, retest to make sure that we don't have the contamination, and then restore potable service. That's the basic plan. And if it was only everyone's house in this room, we'd be done. Right? Pretty straightforward. But we have to do it 10,000 times on over a million feet of pipe. It's a little bit more of an activity. The steps on this are comprised using five actions. When you look at this plan, you might think this is cumbersome, and, and, and the steps are so kind of overly detailed and overly parsed out. But a big part of that is, when we formulate this plan, we have to do it in a way that is compliant with the FEMA reimbursement policies. So when I talk about the different things that went into the development of this plan, there are technical parts of this plan about how we do this from a technical standpoint. But a big part of why this plan looks like it does, and why it's structured how it is, is that we fit into the FEMA funding rules. And generally speaking, the overall directive we were given from FEMA from day one is that you have to prove damage. Once damage is proven, you can replace the damaged thing, and then you apply for reimbursement. And if you follow all the right steps, you'll get reimbursed for the cost of that replacement. And then after that all happens, an auditor in five years will review all of that and decide if you did it right or not. That's the sort of overview of the framework, the financial framework, which is important here, which we are talking about large amounts of money, that we have to make sure we follow as we go through this, this process. It's a little bit like working with your insurance company. It was not a dig at FEMA. It's been really nice. And, and we've done a lot of work with them. They've been, FEMA and Cal OES have been instrumental in helping to make sure that as we go through this process, we're doing things in a way that is aligned with their policies. The people we're working with now are all about trying to make sure that the things we do are fundable under FEMA and are reimbursable under FEMA, so we go through the process and are successful at the end, and coming out of this financially whole. So we have five actions we're taking. First is temporary customer supply. Second is recovering water meters and appurtenances. Third is sampling mains and service laterals. Fourth is repair, replace damaged system components. And five is reconnecting customers. The temporary customer supply is something that I would say has evolved a bit over the last six weeks since I last spoke with you guys. Really, the only need to provide temporary customer supply in the plan as it's evolved, is to allow for stagnation of the service lateral, so that if we get a sample that comes back with a non-detect for any of the contaminants we're looking for, we can be confident that that is actually a clean service lateral. So we want to, you know, there's a house there, there's somebody living in that house, they're using water under the current guidelines to flush toilets and take showers, and, and, and take care of sanitary needs. They're not drinking it, but they're still using it. Or they might be using it for irrigation. And we need to be able to stagnate their service lateral for 72 hours, remember back to the science, that we know that when we get a sample, that we're confident that that sample is accurate. We don't, some people will say, "I'll see you in three days," and they'll take off. And that's, that's fine. Some people have the means or, or ability, or a friend or a relative that can go to their house, and that's great. In some cases, we'll be able to connect that house from a nearby house using what we're calling a hose over, right? So we'll stagnate their service, but we'll hose over from a nearby house to their house. And that, that's preferable, because we're still providing system water with all of the pressure and supply volumes and everything else to the house. Where we can't do either of those, and a person needs to stay in the house and still have sanitation and water, then we would provide a temporary tank to provide non-potable water during the stagnation period, so that they can still flush toilets and do the things that they were doing, you know, before we showed up to test. And that's a bit of a pivot from where we started, which was to provide potable water tanks and shut down the system so we could test it. And we've talked through this in a number of meetings, and a lot of different input from a lot of different people in this room and outside of this room, about how we could do this, and have the, get the result we wanted with the least impact to the public, and with the overarching goal being, return the system to potable service, the system to potable service as soon as possible. And in general, what we found was, the original plan to provide potable water tanks, and then test and recover the system, delayed the return of the system to potable service significantly compared to this plan. This saves a lot of time, at the end of the day, getting the system back to potable service. And even the last person who might, go ahead.
I've had people with trailers ask about how they can get water, houses nearby are getting water. Can they be getting plugged into this system? Living in trailers?
Let's answer that question after we get through the presentation. We'll take that question.
The other thing that we, we had to look at was, if we were really going to distribute 1,300 to 1,500 potable water tanks, when was the 1,500 potable water tank going to get delivered to that person? And how was that relative to when we could get distribution system potable supply out to more people sooner? You know, balancing those things. Because sure, the first 10 might get out there in a month, but it was an eight to 10 month, multimillion dollar project, just to provide temporary potable water tanks. And then we still hadn't made the progress on recovering the system, which is really the focus. So that was, that was why the shift here. And I think that discussion needs to get communicated to the public. This is the first step in that, is having this discussion tonight. And as we go through and talk about this, that really what we, what we really want to focus on is getting potable service to the most people through the distribution system as fast as possible. That was, that was that focus. The second action is recovering water meters and appurtenances. Before you can test a service lateral to see if there's contamination, you have to find the service lateral. And if anyone wants to do a little experiment, go out to a street and try to find all the water meters on that street, and see what your success rate is. If you get better than 50% in 15 minutes on a, you know, 20-house cul-de-sac, then come see me.
Yeah, they need to see us.
We want them on our team.
It's difficult, and everyone here is more familiar than I am with the condition of the streets and what things are, look like out there. Some houses are very simple. You walk up, and there's a meter box, and boom, and there's a meter, you can sample. But other, other places are much more difficult because of debris, because of damage, because of changes in grade. And even before the fire, there were meters that were pretty well hidden. Because this system has been on automated meter recording for a long time, and so there isn't, hasn't been a meter reader popping a box and looking at a number for years. So there's a lot of meters that were buried under landscaping years ago, and they're still buried under landscaping. Just the first thing is locate the meters. And then we want to put in a sample manifold. So we're going to go out and collect upwards of near 20,000 samples. And there are people who will go out and take those samples, and those people are scientists. And we need someone to go in there who knows how to do plumbing, and put together a sample manifold, so the scientist isn't doing plumbing. So the first person, the first group here that is recover water meters is, includes a plumber who can go out, or mechanical contractor can go out and, and, and put together a manifold of the valves and tubing and so forth that's necessary, so that when the sampler goes out there with their sample vials, they can just go out, take their samples, label them, and do all the things the sampler does, and they're not trying to turn wrenches. So that's, that's part of the recovery. The next thing is to go out and sample. So we have to stagnate the lines, coordinate that, and that'll be done on a small area by small area basis. We're not going to try to do the whole system coordinated at once. We'll go to the street and say, "Okay, we're going to sample this street," and talk to whoever is there living on that street about how to best work with them to get the stagnation period. We need to test their service, and then stagnate and test the services. We're going to test, and we're going to produce a tremendous amount of data. And the thing about producing a tremendous amount of data is that you want to be very careful that you can have confidence in that data, that the sample you took from, you know, your house, I can confidently say it was from your house. And so that involves a lot of tagging, and we do a lot of things to make sure that we have confidence in that tracking of that sample from the time it's taken until it's reported, so that when you look and see the sample, "My house is non-detect," we can be confident that that sample actually came from your house, and that that went to a lab and was actually measured as non-detect. It's, again, if it's only the people in this room, that's pretty straightforward. When it's 10,400 or 20,000 samples, you need to have a system by which to do that. The good news is, there is guidance for that, and there is an industry that does that kind of environmental sampling, and there are quality control procedures, and... of environmental sampling, and there are quality control procedures and data management procedures that we will be following that are tested and true about how to be certain that a mass amount of data like that can be tracked, quality controlled, and we can have confidence that the, the data is from the places we think it's from and that it's accurate.
I have a quick question if I could.
Sure.
Are you going to be sampling the meter pre-house, or are you sampling the house in that, after that 72-hour period?
Our plan is to sample at the meter location.
So anything past that meter is the, the customer's responsibility of contamination?
That is correct. But the customer will know whether there was contamination at the meter, which is a helpful thing to know when you're assessing.
At that point?
Yeah. Once the neighborhood has been sampled, then we'll put it back in service so that people can return to using the pot, the water under the current guidelines. So that as we go through the system here, one of the feedbacks we got at the public meeting was, "Can we please try to save all the landscaping that survived? And I'd like to plant some new landscaping and be supported in that, it's a big part of the recovery, and we want to, we want to do this program so that we are providing water as constantly as possible during the whole plan. It'll still be under the current advisory, but that is still very useful water." And then the repair, replacement of damaged system components, once we have the data from the testing, we'll look at what to do with that data. Any service lateral, lateral that has any contaminant over the MCL is clearly eligible for just being removed and replaced, and that's, that's clear. If we have a service lateral that's over the detection limit but under the MCL, so 0.7 of benzene, that is not damaged because it hasn't exceeded the MCL. And so, but it also is not non-detect, which is not something that anybody involved in the discussions would feel comfortable returning to potable service. So the plan is to, at that point, flush that line and retest to see, you know, is it, the second test now over the MCL is the second test non-detect. And that flush and retest, you know, could result in a replacement, it could result, if we have multiple retests that are, are clean, it could result in leaving it in place. But any line that's in that category is going to be sort of pulled out of the, you know, the program and assessed individually and, and sorted out what to do with. Because it's not all about everything getting reimbursed. There, there will be some things that, that PID may choose to do even though it may not be eligible. And that's something that we'll have to talk about with, with everybody and how we deal with those things, but we don't want to just let those particular types of results disappear or go away or get ignored, because it's an important result that we need to decide what to do with this recovery. And obviously, if it's my house, I'd like to find out more of a result like that. With the mains, because the mains, there has been more success with flushing mains and less occurrence of absorption of VOCs in mains than in the service laterals because of sometimes of pipe material, because of pipe diameter, because of water velocities and things like that, and also proximity to the heat of the fire, proximity to the gases produced by the fire. The mains are a bit more protected from long-term contamination than the laterals are. So with the mains, if we get a, a result from a main test that, that, that is above the MCL or above the detection limit, we're going to have a flushing program for that main and see if we can get that main cleared through flushing first. And, and then there again, if we can't see clearance of that main through flushing, then we're going to look at it together and decide what to do, whether to replace that section of main, or parallel it, or how we're going to handle it. Our hope here, a, a, a lot of the main testing so far, I'm not going to say all, but a, a large majority of the main testing has been non-detect, and, and there have actually been a couple of instances now of mains that had a detection and then after flushing and use are now consistently non-detect. So we're hoping that that will be a feasible way to deal with contamination seen in the mains.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So let's say my house tests that my main is contaminated, how long does it take to replace a service line?
That, I, I don't have an answer for that. I, I, I will say that if it's an occupied structure, it will be a priority, but I can't say it will be done within a week or it'll be done within two weeks. We're not there yet on understanding the, the, how this work is going to get.
Another question on a service lateral, if my service lateral tests clear, is there a possibility, as you're flushing a main upstream of that, that you can then recontaminate my service lateral, or the way you're doing it, if I test clear, I'm good from that point forward?
That is a, a point that has been discussed a lot. And at, at this point, I, I think we are of a collective opinion that, that once a lateral tests clear, that the chances of recontamination from the main are negligible. That's not to say it can't, right? Never get an engineer to say that, right? But, but that's, that's, that's what, what's what our current, as a group, our current understanding is, that the, the, the chemistry here or the physics here is that during the fire, you know, empty lines, hot gases, hot pipe, and you get this potential for absorption of the contaminants into the pipe. Now we've got water in the pipes, it's cool water, even if there was contamination in the water, the absorption, absorption rate from the water into the pipe is much slower, if not, you know, non-significant, and, and there's, there's far less chance for that to happen. As we amass data and test and retest and things like that, we may find something different and we'll change our approach, but that's how we're entering the scenario.
So what you were saying is that it, it basically is clean at that point in time and it's subject to change at any other time because the contamination comes from upstream and it could go down into the already tested pipe?
So, so at this point, the, the water that's coming out of the treatment plant is clean. This isn't, so sometimes you'll get cases, there've been cases around the country that sometimes are drawn parallels here, where there was contamination from the source, and the contamination from the source spread out through the distribution system. And that's not what happened here. The source during this whole situation, during the, before the fire, during the fire, after the fire, currently has produced completely compliant, safe drinking water the entire time. So the, the water going into the system has been safe. So it's not that the contamination is coming from upstream or up the, the, the system. At the tips of the system, there are areas that are contaminated. So the water's coming in and pushing out through the system, so those areas, there are little areas on the tips that we know are contaminated, and we're trying to, you know, sort out where those are and deal with them, but it's not that there's contamination at the center of the system that's being pushed out. Does that make sense?
It's basically the tentacles, the tips of the, the tentacles on the lower end that are feeding the structure.
Right. That's what we've observed so far.
Okay, so going back to talking about how long does it take, is there any idea over there, if she finds out that her, her, her pipe's feeding her house and it needs to be replaced?
Yeah.
Is there anybody that's been instructed that knows how long it takes to replace that, or at least has an idea?
Yeah, the, the time to do the project to replace the pipe, I think, can be, there's probably four people in this room that can tell you how long it would take to replace the service lateral. The, the question is, how long will it take for us to have the, the contractor or the mechanism onboard to have the people there to replace that, whether that's PID people, mutual aid people, contractors, et cetera? We're not there yet, we will get there, and we'll be able to answer that question, but we just don't have that sorted yet about how is exactly going to be done. And a lot of that has to do with making sure that we do this in a way that is FEMA-compliant and that we're doing, we're, we're protecting the financial interest of this as well. Now, that, all that said, and I, we, we haven't seen contamination in an active service yet. If we do find contamination in active service, my feeling is it's like an absolute red light siren issue and it will get immediate attention. I, I can't say it anymore, like, "It'll be three days and we'll get it done," or, I don't know the answer to that, and there's a lot of people that have to buy into that. But I can tell you, all the people involved here will freak out and, and, and we'll figure out a way to do it. Right? I mean, that's, that's the, that is, you know, we're very, everyone here that's working on this is incredibly passionate about trying to protect public health and, and do a, do a job right for PID. So that, it's a huge issue, I just, I don't have a, a ready answer.
The 3 million gallon anchor facility that was underground that had a bladder that was burnt by the fire, has that been alienated from our water system that is coming out now?
Yes, so that's Reservoir B, and it was a, a big water bed, right? A liner and a plastic cover on it.
Is that possible part of the contamination, the burning of the bladder and the...
Certainly possible, but it's isolated from the system right now.
Okay.
So as, as far as ongoing contamination, I'd say that immediately was...
In the beginning.
In the beginning, it's possible.
Because I, from what I understand, you really aren't sure where the benzene and the VOCs are originated from, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of theories. That is a possibility, that Reservoir B did contribute.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen any data to support that, and it's isolated off from the system right now and essentially bypassed. And in fact, the lines that go by it, I believe, have been tested.
We've tested the whole transmission portion of that coming from B-res, and we've not detected anything in those particular lines, and those particular lines don't have any service connections on them, no other laterals that would be off of there from the B-res to the places that we've sampled. That, that transmission main is basically moving water from tank to tank to tank.
Okay. Of course, the last step is to try to reconnect and lift the do-not-drink order. And, and how we do that, I think, the one thing I'd like to emphasize about that part of the plan is that there will be people using judgment on making that decision. It's not going to be a formulaic, if this, then that, then the water's clean. All of the professionals at PID with engineering support from us and water quality support from, again, some of the other stakeholders involved in the, the discussions are going to look at the data that we get and make recommendations for when to return what locations to potable service. And that decision-making process is important. One of the things that we've done with this plan is decide that we can do that a little bit at a time, that it's not necessary for the entire system to be found to be potable before anything in the system can be returned to potability. And that, that is a big part of how you can accomplish this in a timeframe less than the three years or two-to-three-year original timeframe for how to recover the system. And that is a public policy discussion, a public policy decision about the importance of water in returning the town to viability against the importance of absolute certainty of the entire system being found to be clear of contamination before returning any of the system to contamination. And that is a balance that we will be talking about every time I stand in front of you. When we, the first time we get together and say, "Here's the first group of places that we think should return to potability," and whether that's a staff decision or, or how that happens, that, that decision is going to be a balance of, of that, the, the certainty of that versus the need to return to potable. Plan and implementation, there, there are in this 74-page document pages and pages of implementation plans for each one of these steps. I can tell you, those are ongoing development. I think Michael was working on a flow chart that is now how many pages long?
16 pages.
16-page on flow chart for some of these things. There, these are complicated actions, trying to make sure everything happens, but that's, that's, there's a lot of detail on that. Cost estimates, each one of those implementation plans came with a cost estimate. The current cost estimate is $53.3 million for this, this work, and that is based on a lot of assumptions, and a lot of assumptions that are based on best information that we know today, because you've got to look at things like, well, what percentage of the system will turn out to be contaminated and need to be replaced? And all we can do is look at the data that we have, which is based on under 200 or about 200 sample points out of the 20,000, so we're at 1% of the total samples we'll have, and we're basing these cost estimates on that 1%. So it's difficult to say this is exact. We've tried to be conservative in this, so that as we present this to various funding agencies, we are at least a little bit conservative about the costs, but we've also tried to be realistic about it and, and back it with a, 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 a thought process behind how each one of the costs was developed.
Have you thought about ways to speed up the testing process?
Yes, I'll talk about that in just a second.
How much is that $53.3? It was pretty difficult to go get that.
So we have endeavored to make it all reimbursable by FEMA. The, the, the problem, or I guess the challenge, opportunity, right? You're not supposed to say challenge. The opportunity put in front of us is that there is no such thing as a preapproval on any of this stuff. So we have, we, we are, that is an ongoing discussion happening about how we do this, and, and it seems like every week we find out, understand new ways that we can be in better compliance, and we act on those, and we will continue to do that as we go through the project.
I have a question about the procurement, that part there, the, like you're talking about the procurement process and how you've got to jump through a whole lot of hoops. So you're talking about maybe it won't be until late summer before anything can start.
So I'll talk about that in a second. It probably won't be until late summer before contracts and needs, the trust, or, uh, the mechanical contractors, testing agencies, and those sorts of people can start their work, because you have to go through a process, the PID process, by the way, is higher risk.
No, I understand, that, that was my point exactly, just like when I was on the city council, we would have things come up where we could take emergency action, and we wouldn't have to go through the normal bid process. We, if we had to streamline something, there, there are some things in government, there are some ways to do that, and, and I would just suggest, and you look, if there's any possibility to streamline that, or find some workaround for...
Absolutely. We've also got some ideas about how to get some work done in any one time that will help too, so I'll, I'll get through that and I'll, we can talk about it, no worries. So if we went through all these steps, our schedule is about 24 months, two years, or a bit better than last time, but still 24 months. And so we looked at it and said, "Can we do better than that?" I knew I'd be standing here and all these eyes in the back of my head. So we said, "You can do better than that," and, and we used some geographic information system tools, so we have a lot of information about the, the PID system. We have to look through a, a map here, this is a, a snapshot of our geographic information system. We looked at all of the pipes in the, the PID system, and then we looked at all of the standing structures which we got from the CAL FIRE database. So none, none of this, no GIS is perfect, just so you know, but, but it's, it's, it's a good way to start looking at how to prioritize the system. So we took those standing structures and associated each one of them with a, a service and then, and then each main served a certain number of standing structures. So not just the ones that are connected to that main, but also the ones that are downstream of that main. So that starts to give you an importance factor for each main. So a main that serves all 1,500 standing structures should be a first priority, and a main that serves zero standing structures should be a last priority. And when we did this, we're working with our GIS team and data that we're getting from PID and from CAL FIRE and so forth, and, and I told the GIS person, I said, "Look, I'm really hoping here that when you do this, you can get a significant portion of the, of the pipe is serving zero standing structures, because we can put that off for a bit and focus on the pipes that are serving standing structures." So the result of that is that... So the result of that, um, is that the almost fifty percent of the mains in the distribution system right now are serving zero standing structures. So that's good news from a project's, uh, speed standpoint in terms of being able to go out and focus our testing on the pipes that serve standing structures so that those standing structures are, are recovered first.
I'll bring up my trailer thing again. Do you don't consider a trailer that somebody's living on their own property as a standing structure?
So there's, there's a couple of things. That's, that's a good point, and somebody that has a building permit pulled, who will, uh, you know, have a standing structure, you know, hopefully in some period of time, and someone that pulls a new building permit. So this is not a, a fixed, uh, priority setup. So, so a- as we get information that, um, here's an address that has a trailer on it that needs to be served, it can be added to the standing structures list. If we get information, I, I pulled the information from the company that's doing the, um, plant checking for the town. And those properties, as of tomorrow or the next day, are getting put into this system as standing structures so that we can then, you know, make sure that we're taking those into account in the prioritization. So that we can, this thing can adapt as people return and as people start to rebuild, we can adapt our priority list if we need to to get to where people are rebuilding sooner. So that's the, that's the approach we take.
I'd say more and more trailers in town.
Yeah. As soon as we know where they are, we can start to see how that affects our priorities. It's not going to say that, you know, um, as, as you build the number of connections that we want to serve, the overall, that, that number, fifty percent serving zero is going to drop, right? Because somebody went to a place where there were zero standing structures and added a structure, and it's going to feed into the priority list. So it's, it'll, it'll help us, again, get to the most structures the soonest. But still, to get to all of the services will take the two years, but we can get to the most structures the soonest. That's our goal. And, and this will be a ongoing, the prioritization of testing will be an ongoing, week to week effort. Um, that will, will use all the information we can to, to sort out how that party works. But, but with the overarching goal of, without bias, serve the most people who have a, a place that they need to occupy the soonest. As the, the general approach.
Are you going to put in commercial structures in that, structures?
Yes.
Three things. The landscape, the meters are hit by landscape, why don't we just have the guys drive around with their, with their little antenna? And the ones that are in, obviously are still working now to go to find those. Second is, what do you think about hot water for removing the VOCs? Like they do in gas stations? They dump the hot water in the ground, then they go over fifty, sixty feet and they suck it back out. And after a while, everybody's familiar with that down by Thomas Harbor, they dig down there, that seemed to have worked for EPA. That's second I'd like you to consider. But third I'd like you to consider mainly is putting concrete yard boxes on all these classes of meters. Because I believe if they had, if they had concrete yard boxes, we wouldn't have had melting meters. And that would have solved a lot of problems right there. Because I know you guys could use plastic meters because they're cheaper. But, but it'd be really nice to see concrete boxes on them so they'd be more fire resistant.
Go back to one first. Tell me what one was.
One was, uh, use your antenna for.
Okay, yes, locating is definitely a part of this, but again, the volume of locating, a million feet of pipe, ten thousand services, it just takes time.
Well, when you dive down the road with an antenna, it'd go off the signal string, it'd go off when you went by one, and you'd tell it was.
Absolutely. And you'd mark it with paint, and the next person can find it that it's a million feet of pipe.
Oh yeah, you'd do a big job, sir.
Hold on, hold on, let me get through his, and then we'll go on. I don't, I don't know if I'm out of Robert's rules, or, but I'm just going to address questions.
You're fine. Just dated yourself, Sammy.
The second, the second question was about.
Was about why not use hot water to get the VOCs out, because you go for gas stations.
I think in, in the cases where we are dealing with main contamination, we're going to start with cold water flushing. If that doesn't work, and we're looking for other things to do, we will look at a myriad of alternatives. In the case of a, of a contaminated lateral, it's easier and cheaper to just replace it. Their question was about putting concrete meter boxes in, which is a, a very good suggestion, and I think something that.
We're, we're putting that into our ha- hazard mitigation, uh, funding under the FEMA replacement of those meter boxes that we would put in. Higher grade, uh, concrete boxes so that this disaster wouldn't happen again.
Everybody used to have some, I mean, I remember in the fifties, they, everybody got a concrete yard box.
In my case, I had a concrete box over my meter, and it was doing fine. They cut all the trees down, they came in with the thing and picked it up, it picked up the concrete box and took it off. I, I guess they didn't damage their hammer mill too badly, I don't know, but, so I don't have a concrete box around my meter. Well, certainly, yeah.
I have a question. You, I mentioned occupiable.
Yeah, I.
Some people are not occupying, had a thirty-seven years old.
We started using occupiable. Which is, so, not to get in the weeds, but when we go through the CAL FIRE database, if your property had a house, a shed, and a shop, those were the three structures, but we need to treat those as one from the meter standpoint. And so we looked at, that is one occupiable area.
Okay, no, it just, my mom's not there.
All right, say it, any, any, any stretch of it's occupiable, I'm sorry.
Occupiable, okay, thank you.
Um, I just have a suggestion. Um, there's zones put together by the buyer zones, and they're in, um, co- in public, I mean, in social media with those. Messages to those zones, you have landowners mark their own meters, maybe with some flag or something that PID could provide, would get a whole bunch of meters marked in her.
I disagree.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's, I mean, it's a community effort here, and if that's, you know, people tend to kind of potentially where their meters are at least close.
Are you still working off the premises starting the top of Skyway and working down?
A little bit.
Because you talked about clusters of homes.
So if you look at this map, the dark purple, um, are meters that serve over a hundred stand, uh, occupiable structures. And then as it gets lighter and thinner towards blue, it's less structures. So it is, just by the nature of a water distribution system, and again, um, these maps are, are evolving. But by the nature of a water distribution system, these upper pipes are going to serve more, and as you get down out towards the fingers, they serve less. But there are some, um, some large diameter pipes that just don't serve that many standing homes in some of these zones that would get, um, that a, a, a pipe in a lower zone would get done first. So for instance, this pipe here that's all the way down in a lower zone would get tested before this pipe up here in the upper zone. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, yeah.
It's kind of boring.
Where we live, this isn't even on the map yet.
Sorry.
That's what worries me.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand.
Right about where you were just at. So we've got a cluster of about ten to twelve homes that survived. And that's, but I mean, being told a year and a half to two years before we, somebody gets to us.
Or you'll be close to less.
Yeah, and that's, that's my only concern.
So what we, what we, what we believe we've accomplished with this is you will get tested before a block that doesn't have any standing homes. Because I thought would be incredibly frustrating if I lived in Zone G, and a, a, a street with no standing homes in Zone A got tested before me. But we tried to resolve that issue. We're working on doing better. We're always working on doing better, but, but at least we got from sort of bulk testing by zone to priority testing by, by occupiable structures still by zone.
Which is good.
And we're gonna still work on doing that.
Um, what do you, what do you do if you've been in contract, you've been doing some water, but then tonight you see that your street is listed as zero standing homes?
Um, you can contact PID.
Call me.
Again?
Or, or.
Call me.
Yeah.
He said that.
Call me.
Yeah.
What you just said earlier, that if I got a building permit, I'm going to start building footings next week, so would I be classified? I mean, I'm going to be construction water, I'm going to be water.
Like I said, uh, well, first of all, I got the list of current building permits, and we'll incorporate that into the priority. Um, the construction waters and other questions, and how we kind of request that the construction waters may discuss right now, apart from having a backflip of that, you know, if I want to.
But, but you quoted, that was a question.
You're giving a list of any building permits. All right, yeah, just, if you're one of that, if you're a five to minutes, about twenty-two of them, for things that you can do. Cover the pools and, and, uh, so, yeah.
You go.
Yeah, I understand, they're, they're kind of easy to, I don't know.
And not putting you on the spot, I know a lot of variables. I know we were, we were looking at two to three years, and I was saying, oh, I got some similar issues, obviously not as substantial as ours. They were looking at a year and a half to two years, they fixed it eight months, and I'm not asking you to say it's going to be fixed eight months, but, so have we gone from three years to?
Good segue. Are you a shill? So this is where we think we are on schedule right now about the number of services. So the first column is the number of services, uh, that have been tested of the ten thousand four hundred, and that incorporates the associated appurtenances, fire hydrants and, and so forth in those areas. The second column are the approximate standing structures that are included with those services. So by the time we get through fifteen hundred services that we've tested, and we test, uh, if we prioritize it well, we think we can get two hundred and fifty standing structure, or occupiable structures. And by the time we get through three thousand, we can get four hundred and fifty, but by the time we get through forty-five hundred, seven hundred and forty, and then the six thousand to all of the current occupiable standing structures and submitted permits as of today. That's obviously going to change over time, and the numbers are all going to change. The timeframes there are for when we think we can get to the meters, get the sampling completed, repair, replace, and reestablish water connection. And you can see the dates, that we would start to see, uh, water service reestablished in November of nineteen, and then continue on through February twenty-one, but with hopefully all of the current standing structures served by June of twenty twenty. That is better than it was. We absolutely are doing everything we can to make it better than it is. So, I mean, I, I think, um, we are always careful with throwing dates out, and, and we always want to be better than what we tell you. You know, under, whatever it is, under promise, ever deliver, especially in a case like this where people are making life decisions. I understand lots of people making life decisions based on dates like this. We think that's accomplishable with what we know right now. And I, we think we can do better, and we're going to keep on working to do better, but right now, there's a huge schedule that, um, is put together. And actually, it's worth looking at for just a minute.
But during that entire time, you're still going to deliver non-potable water except for the three days that you want, uh, since, have the system set aside while you're testing, is that correct?
And even during the three days, we're going to deliver it by either a hose over or a temporary tank.
Okay, so we always have irrigation for our landscape, if there are any, so that we're.
That's, that's correct, that is our point.
Excellent.
If you have your water tested on your own and it comes back looking okay, are you still to assume you shouldn't be drinking it? Or is that, if it comes back, you're only testing.
Yeah, I, I.
Let me answer that. Uh, under our current, under our current advisement, we are still saying use it under the advisement until we clear it ourselves so that we make sure that the protocol that's, we have as what we feel is the correct protocol is followed, and that all of the samples we feel are, are correct coming back. So that's what our, that's what our recommendation is.
And filtration systems are not necessarily.
We're, we're not, we're, we're not, uh, able to kind of guarantee a filtration system is going to clean your water. There's other people out there that, that maybe can give that guarantee to you, but as a district, we can't do that.
Can I talk about the filtration now instead of waiting?
Uh, let's get through Sammy's thing, and then we.
Uh, just a quick peek of the schedule, I'm not going to go into any detail, but I just want to show you, this is kind of a cascading schedule. Each one of these steps is started, and then shortly after that, the next step is started, and the, the crews that are doing these steps, pieces that are around. And that's in order to get it all done as quickly as possible. But there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of, of, uh, cogs that have to fit with each other as we go through it. And that's, that's part of what we laid out here to try to get to the point of being able to give some dates. Uh, but there, there is a lot of, of consideration that went into how this might all fit together. Um, as we get to the point of bringing on the actual people who are going to do this work, um, which could be contractors or, um, um, other water agencies through mutual aid or different, different mechanisms by which the actual work gets done, then those schedules will get to be more and more real and more and more, um, reliable. The last thing is about pilot testing. So, um, we've been doing a lot of planning, and we've been, uh, having a lot of discussions, and we, we are, and there's been a lot of testing that's been done, um, of the system. And we try to understand the, the nature of the contamination and the extent of the contamination. The next step in terms of supporting the progress of this plan is to start executing the plan in a pilot scale, meaning a, you know, small scale with PID forces and with some assistance from mutual aid with other, uh, agencies where it makes sense. To go out and start finding meters, putting on sample apparatus onto those meters, testing, getting results, and deciding whether to clear or not clear areas. And so that effort has already begun, uh, the preparation has begun. The, the PID staff have already, uh, planned, uh, where to go, and has already started going into different places and, and testing this out. But the testing that we're doing is not, uh, a science project, it is to actually start testing and clearing areas. So our, our, our goal here is that over the next few months, as we are going through this, uh, procurement process and, and trying to get this large force that can do this enormous job, um, up and running and functioning, that a small force will already be doing the job for a few reasons. One is so we learn if our plan is a good plan, and we get some field experience with it and understand what the shortcomings are and how we can deal with those. And that's already been happening the last few weeks. Two is so that we can make some progress while we are, um, awaiting the, um, ability to make faster progress with more labor and more personnel. And so, um, that testing has, has started, we are following the general priority approach that we've looked at, um, and, and working, uh, through that, that, um, along these veins, and working our way into the, uh, PID staff are working their way into the system, uh, to start that process. And we hope to go and report back some results on that as we go forward and, you know, communicate how it's working and what we're seeing. Uh, because a lot of how we all feel about this plan and how we all feel about the safety of the system is going to depend on what that data looks like. And as we get more than one percent of the system tested, and we get two percent and three percent, five percent, and ten percent of the system tested, and understand how widespread is this contamination, what types of, of, uh, of locations does it seem to occur at? And start to get a little bit better handle on, on why it's happening or where it's happening, then we can start to really have some more confidence in how we bring things back online.
Sammy, do you mind if I just, like, backtrack just real quick to a comment that was said? And we've been talking about cooperation, and it's going to take cooperation, we've asked for it before, and we've got it, and we appreciate it. And we need it going forward, and locating the meters is a great help, it can be a great help. I just would ask and plead that if you decide that that's what you're going to do, be extremely careful. We're finding hazards out there that have never existed here before, and you get focused on what's going on and what you're looking for. There are trip hazards out there, there are things sticking up that can cause serious bodily damage. Just be aware, there's holes out there that are covered by debris that are just pits that you're going to fall in. And there is traffic out there that is enormous, huge pieces of equipment that are very dangerous to operate around at the swing of a bucket. And that's just not a good thing. So if you are going to do that, that is the priority. Be very, very careful, be aware of your surroundings. If you are going to do that, please use a blue flag because blue means water. So if we see a blue flag, we are queuing into that, right?
I wasn't suggesting that we go out and canvass neighborhoods, I was suggesting.
No, no, your own meter, I'm talking about your own meter. If you go out to locate your own meter, I'm telling you, there are dangers out there that we have not experienced before. Our crews are out there watching each other when we go out. When we go out, we are in tandem, we're in pairs, because one person is watching the person that is doing the work. It has to be that way. It absolutely has to be that way.
Well, we can get some blue flags.
Well, now that I open my mouth.
Ace Hardware, carry him.
Ace Hardware does carry him. Thank you, Woody.
Well, they're gonna get attacked, probably.
Yeah, so, so we do know where a lot of the meters are, especially on the standing structures. We do know where a lot of those meters are. Uh, we located an awful lot of the meters, uh, because we had to shut those meters off, we needed to isolate those meters, right? So we know where an awful lot of them are. There are still some that even when we were doing that work, repressurizing, uh, the system, that were under debris, log jams, cars. Those are starting to come to light now, so we're finding them, although I've got a few sneaky ones, uh, but just be safe is all I'm saying. We know, we, we know, so that process is gonna go a little, that, that'll, that'll be all right, that finding those, it's uncovering them and getting to them, that's gonna be the little bit, a little bit of a pain, I think.
Is there a better way of identifying the meter? We have three boxes next to each other, and your, your folks came out to hook us up. It took them almost two days to figure out which meter was mine. Uh, there was no identification, they couldn't, you know, they couldn't figure out which went to what. It's maybe spray paint on the box.
We used to have a number, right? We used to have a number that we could look at. Actually, we had three numbers that we could look at and identify who that meter went to. And now, we have some of those numbers, and some of them just simply aren't there. So that's a bit of troubleshooting in there, but I think that that's what Sammy and Michael are talking about. We're gonna be able to put identifiers on these, and then when it comes time for reconnection, right? And there's gonna be some of that that we're not gonna be able to identify on paper and have that, it's just gonna be a, let's look it up and see where this water goes. Uh, but it, it's one of those things, it's a challenge, it's an obstacle, but we'll, we'll, we'll cover it for sure.
For those of us with tanks right now that have been getting fill-ups, is there, I noticed your verbiage changed to non-potable, right, for the tanks now? So how does that work if you've been getting potable water? Are you guys now gonna help us fill up our tanks with non-potable?
We're not, we're not gonna do anything different with you. You're, you're already basically set up for, for testing. How are you already set up? You're set up.
For fill-ups now going forward, are you providing us spot for trucks to come fill up?
We're working on getting a location for that, for them to come fill up with PID water, yeah.
The water that's being delivered is always potable water.
Okay.
The reason why we said non-potable tanks is because we don't know the condition of the service or the lines or things like that. The water is, has been and always will be potable water.
Really quick, I, I asked this at the, the other meeting, maybe we were working issue of PID supplying, if we spend the money for a tank and a pad and all the rest of the stuff, for PID somewhere in the future to supply water to us at a reasonable price, is that still being worked, I hope?
We're still working it, but we think that by the time we get it all worked out, you probably will be back in potable service. This is what we're looking at.
Uh, no, I don't think that's gonna work, because, uh, I, we, we estimate that it'll be up and standing in about a month and a half.
Well, you mean our tank?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I just poured a pad.
We're, so.
It's two thousand dollars to pour a pad.
Yeah, so we're working on getting a delivery, area for delivery, but right now, we're still working through the FEMA issue about getting those trucks to be paid for to deliver that water.
Okay, so it's in process.
Yeah, 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 we're still working with them.
I thought you said that was.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're, we're working on getting a area for the trucks to come in, if, but we don't know if we can pay for the truck to actually deliver it to you. But, but by getting that water service in town, it should drive the cost of that delivery down.
Well, right now, two hundred dollars per two thousand gallons.
Right.
And ninety-eight percent of it is the delivery cost, right, on the water.
Right, so we're hoping to drive that cost down a little bit.
With a five thousand gallon tank, it's gonna be pretty expensive, yeah. So, yes, it's gonna take three months.
It's a death call from you at that point. You said if his meter is clear, but he's got a two hundred foot customer side line, because he has to replace it. That's, that's a death call for you about maybe doing.
How would I find out if I can?
Um, you can test the water at your house.
Get it tested.
There's, uh, I think there's been some guidance on that, it's being developed about, about how to do that testing and, and check the house. Um, and you can make a death call as of when you get the result back from the, the services being provided, whether, when you think the chances are of your line of.
So what are the health symptoms on somebody that may have drank some of that gas? How do you know?
So the MCL for benzene is, uh, based on, on a lifetime of exposure, um, and it's what's called a chronic contaminant, not an acute contaminant, so especially at the levels we're talking about, there are the chronic exposure limit, the benzene, that is still drinking gasoline, right? That's part of benzene.
You got an awful lot of water in there.
But, but the, the, the concern, the reason why there is an MCL, one part per billion for benzene is, is, uh, a lifetime of exposure and increasing your risk of getting cancer. That is the concern. We need the other.
I can help on that, too. We're, we're working with the Health Department, EPA, um, and other US organizations to try to get information to the customers on health effects. So there is something in the works on getting health effects of, uh, exposure to this VOC, yeah.
And just a general rule about MCLs, this is not always the case, but generally, they're based on two liters a day of, of water being drank by a person for seventy years, um, and the MCL is based on not increasing their cancer risk by more than one in a million. So that's the, that's the, that's been the public health mantra for the nation since the seventies. Clean Water Act and so forth, they're based on two liters a day, seventy years of drinking it, don't increase your risk from any one of those exposures of, of getting, uh, a disease in the wrist, or something like that.
So if your seventy or eighty years old, you might as well just drink the water. They can't say that.
That would ask a question at a hundred and twenty-two.
They can't say that.
That's correct.
You can, but they can't.
There is, there is a, there, to make it a little more complicated, there are, uh, the, the state and federal agencies and different state agencies don't all agree on how to make that calculation. California, as we all might imagine, is one of the most conservative places in the way we make that calculation of what the limit should be. Um, but, but there are other limits. I tried not to get into too much detail on that in the document, because it gets confusing for those of us that even do this for a living. But, but, but yes, there are different limits in different places, and there's a World Health Organization level, too, that advises people around the world, that they should be in those areas.
Could you give me a suggestion? I'm putting a tank in, I'm putting a P I D from the house in the living, I'm gonna put faucets on it so she can water her plants and do what she needs to. I wanted to back flush the house, uh, to try and do the best I can on flushing it. Would you suggest waiting that seventy-two hour or more period before I do flushing?
About we talk for fifteen minutes after, and I'll tell you everything I know about it.
Okay, I just, yeah, I'm trying to figure.
Well, I also had a question about currently, as I am, as you said, you are favor testing the water right now with a, with a small group to figure out the best way to do it and get the best results. After you get that data testing, and you try to expand and get more people to help, have you approached university students or anything like that as a project for that?
Sure, there, there are definitely a variety of volunteer, um, opportunities here, whether that's graduate students or, or other university students or high school students, or people who want help, or, you know, non-profit, and things like that, that they absolutely do. The, the, the one issue that we, um, always need to be cognizant of is that we need to be confident in this data set. You need to be confident that when your sample was taken, it was taken by a person who knows how to take that sample and took it correctly, and that was shipped to the lab correctly, and so on and so forth. And that takes a certain, it takes a professional sampler, and there's a lot of training that goes into it. Besides all of that, um, when somebody takes samples for a living, there are also OSHA guidelines that they follow about how to protect themselves from the things they're sampling, because you need nothing but to take samples your whole life of contaminated water, and you wanna make sure that you're protected from those contaminants. So in terms of using, um, volunteers for things, there are definitely parts of this project that we'll be looking for volunteer assistance with, sampling is probably.
Well, the samplers are paid.
Yes.
We, we are using the universities for analysis, for, uh, looking at the data, making conclusions of the data, coming up with al- algorithms and different things, and, uh, doing kind of that brainiac stuff that they can look at on paper. We're, we're using Chico State, we're using Butte College, we're using, uh, Purdue, Oregon State, uh, you know, all these universities out there that are, that are looking to support, we're, they're supporting on that type of, of stuff.
I, I think where they really, the kind of research institution stuff that's really gonna come into play, and we'll talk about it in about a year, when we amass a bunch of data and we're trying to answer the question, what, what are the correlations? Where did this happen? And maybe we can decide how it happened based on the correlations between, what a great idea that, that Jim had, um, is we have meter data that will tell us when those meters were spinning backwards, and then we can correlate that with sample data and try to start to look for correlations. There's a ton of great science here, but right now, our focus is on recovering and returning the system to potability, and then the, the science, there's, there's, there's decades worth to be.
What is that, a science person? Probably think outside of that.
I think she left.
I, I do have a question, Sammy. I'm a little concerned on contract management. I mean, you're gonna have a lot of contracts to manage here. How, how do you, how are you gonna get your handle on all these contracts you're dealing?
So as far as, as far as the Waterworks Engineers team, that team will grow over the next six months to manage those contracts. Right now, um, this has been focused with, um, uh, three people really focused on it, and three or four others working on parts of it, and then a sub consultant, uh, working on parts of it.
So you can't.
Grow the org chart to have contract managers, that more people will join that team and,
Okay.
and manage those contracts, because you're right, there is a lot, and especially in terms of, um, scheduling and sequencing, um, there's a, a full-time job, just making sure that everybody's staying out of everybody else's way. Throw into that, trying to coordinate with debris removal.
Yeah.
Who, you know, need water for their health and safety reasons, uh, because when they're doing debris removal, the dust can be hazardous, and we're gonna enter into, oh, it's dawned today, it's gonna keep getting warmer, we will have a dusty, uh, you know, season, and so we wanna try to coordinate with debris removal so that we are not testing a street that they're doing debris removal on and trying to stagnate water that they need to use. Um, there's a number of coordination items that, it's a number of full-time jobs there that we will stand our team into.
Great, thank you.
I had a question. Um, have you received the timeline from FEMA as to when reimbursement would stop?
Yeah, that, so there is, uh, maybe Kevin can talk about a little more, there are, there are timelines and extensions, and actually, you know, potential for some programs that have far longer timelines, so.
Right. I just know it's a full-time job keeping up with the timelines, and they don't always communicate them very clearly until it's the week before the deadline. And so then you have to submit a letter, and, and so I just wanna make sure we're.
So, so we submitted a letter for the six-month extension of the category B, uh, emergency work. Um, we're working through the project list right now, we're still working out a category B, uh, with our funding. Um, I have an RFP out for a PA consultant to come on board, because it is overwhelming, just the, the mass amount. So we're gonna probably bring a PA consultant on board to help us figure out how to amass this data to keep up with these things. And it seems like every time we have a conversation with FEMA, there is something new that comes out. Um, and so, just from our conversation yesterday, which we had a, um, the director of CalOES was up to meet with us, and then, uh, high-level FEMA individuals, they came up with a different alternative that we might be interested in taking advantage of. So now we're taking a look at that to see how we can formulate this plan into that funding opportunity that might be an easier funding for us, that has the longer extensions for, that we're, so we're not having to go out and do everything within this timeframe, which the three-year, five-year timeframe of the normal PA work, that maybe we have a longer term as the town rebuilds, we can then piece together the areas as they rebuild. So we are looking all into all, every single one of those.
Great, and then cost of, the share of cost?
Share of cost right now is that the Fed's on category B, which is nice that we're working in, is ninety percent, and the seven, the seven and a half percent is the state side of things, but we've heard that the state is going to, I believe, I don't know if the state's picking up the hundred percent, or it's, they're, they're, it's almost like a guarantee that they're gonna ta, pick up that hundred percent. So right now, we're in that ninety-ten portion, um, and that there's an opportunity, actually, that the state will pick up the other twenty-five, now that there's a lot of legislation out there, that they're gonna pick up the full fund of that twenty-five. So there shouldn't be any local share on our side, but if there is, we're looking at DWR for grant opportunities to go in for that local share portion for the funding opportunities on, on the additional amounts of, of that. So that's the, the, the other, and then we have that legislative ask that's in for the twenty-one million, which would then bridge that gap, so that there, if there's gaps of funding that we're not being able to get, we would have that funding available to that. And then if that doesn't come through, we're looking at FEMA, that they have a loan program out there, that we've looked into that, so that we're, we're ready to jump on that if that other funding doesn't come into place.
Great.
You need to start wearing a helmet so your head doesn't explode.
I have a question. What would the PID tell to, say to a would, would-be home buyer coming into Paradise right now? What would you tell them?
What would I tell them?
Everything we told you.
Patience.
Well, I think would you encourage them and tell them that there's light at the end of the tunnel?
Oh, absolutely.
And be real with them and say there's a big climb, and, you know.
I'd say, I'd say be real with, I'd say be real with them and say that there's a light at the end of the tunnel. I say that the, this plan here is a workable plan, it's got great timelines to it, there's gonna be some, we're all, we're all having pains, right? We're all developing pains through this, uh, and a, a person coming up the hill is gonna join some of the pain, but at the end of the tunnel, I think there's gonna be some great gains associated with that, and this, I, I, I'm, I'm ultimately confident this, this, that PID will be as good or better at the end of this than it was before the fire.
We can recover the system.
Yeah, yeah.
We can recover the system.
So are you broadcasting that to the world? You know, regarding?
Sure, in Facebook right now.
Yeah, we have lots of people, we need people, you know, we need a customer base.
We do, and we're, we're.
That's important.
Yep.
On that, would you recommend doing a temporary, uh, doing a tank for water if someone was buying a home and considering the situation right now, should they do a tank?
I think that's, I, I, I wouldn't give them advice on that. Uh, I would say that, uh, that based on the plan, that, that potable service will be available to them in a somewhat expedient manner. Uh, they're gonna be prioritized based on that if they're buying a house, it's a standing home, so they'll be prioritizing them to get them water service quickly, um, and how they bridge that gap is kind of a, kind of a decision that they'll have to make.
And that's the hard part, is, is like, laypeople don't know enough to make those decisions, because we're actually trying to buy a home that has a filtration system, they've been water testing, but we're debating on do we do the tank or not, because we've got a two and a four-year-old grandchildren that are living with us, and so are we being negligent, are we being overcautious? And it's like, how do you make that, in, in all good conscience, knowing that you're gonna cover yourself and not say something that could potentially, but how much is reasonable and how much is?
Right.
Over too much?
Yeah, and we're, we're, we're begging for the answers for those, because we don't have the answers, just like you don't have the answers. So we're, we're looking outside of PID, DDW, we're looking outside for answers for that, and there is task force that have been developed at the state level that are working on those answers. They don't have them yet, but there is, so there is development going on, it's slow development, but it takes us pleading and, and, I mean, Andy Welton pleading and, and everybody pleading to say, give us these answers, please, somebody out there, so they're finally collaborating to get those answers to you.
So just to add to that, me and my wife have been homeless since the fire. Our house went back in escrow today.
Wow.
And I need help, I need water.
Mm-hmm.
I need somebody to point me in the right direction to get some, some tanks or do what I need to do, because I need to have potable water to secure a loan.
Hmm. Uh, that's, I, I, I feel your pain, and I wish we could make it snap like that.
Who do I, who do I talk to? Point me in the right direction?
Well, you can.
Mark is already, I've, I've been telling you. Mark is already, I've been telling him for a while.
You can.
They're very supportive.
And I don't know what the requirements are for your mortgage, if it needs to be connected to the service.
You have to run the water for hot and cold. It doesn't matter if it's potable or not.
Okay.
Okay, but we need a tank because we need to drink water. We have animals.
Mm-hmm.
We have horses.
There's tank providers out there.
There are three companies that deliver water. Two of them will install the tanks. There's a tough company that's on Highway 32 on the outside of Chico that will.
Can we walk off the grid?
Absolutely. Let's have a sidebar.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, all right, any other questions? Any questions from Sammy?
I'm good.
Okay. I think we're going to move on.
You need to make a motion.
Make a, make a motion to accept the report, the.
So we, Sammy, do you remember what our, what our language was that we discussed yesterday?
Recovery plan.
Accept the drought water system recovery plan with the understanding that we'll be back to update it on a regular basis.
Okay. We have a motion?
We accept the plans presented and with the understanding that we'll be revising in the future.
Very good. A second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you Sammy very much. It was very informative. Appreciate it.
I really appreciate the support. Thank you.
Why don't you stay there?
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the.
Hey, can you, can you disconnect?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to move to 12D. Director Kellag requested that we move this item up to 12D. Sammy, if you want to hang there for a minute?
That'd be great.
So Director Kellag, you want to?
Thank you very much, Mark. I've been visiting with quite a few people in Paradise.
Can we have a little quiet please? Quiet, quiet please. Thank you.
I've been visiting with people in Paradise who are putting in their own water systems for getting benzene out. We have a former director who I ran into the other day, and he says he'll have a system around $400 and he's talked to Sammy about it and Kevin. The district can't recommend any of these things, but they're out there and he's going to be, he's out of town. He would have been here tonight to talk about it. Possibly we can put him on the agenda for next month. But he has designed this thing and said it's, his cost is $400 and you need filters for it. You don't need a tank. If the water can come in your service, it'll clean it up and be potable in your house is what he's saying. Now, the other day, a friend of mine who happens to be on South Feathers Board as a director, his dad passed away last summer, but any rate, he wanted to rent the house out and got it all together. So he put a $4,000 system in of activated charcoal to clean up the water going in the house and then, and he has a tenant waiting for it. So he had the money to do it. I've ran into other people who put their own tanks in with similar activated charcoal. The district isn't recommending any of these, but they're out there and as far as I'm concerned, the market's there. And the key to this is the people that want to get back on their property and cannot wait for us and you're afraid you have to wait, you should be looking into these activated charcoal machines and go out and talk to the suppliers and so forth. Since PID won't take a stand on it, then it's up to you and it's up to the marketplace to see and talk to them and ask all questions about when they were released, filters and when are they replaceable and when do they inspect it and things like that have been brought up. But these people are back in their houses with potable water. And I know one family who actually, to get their house sold, they put in one of these systems. So every one of you, whether, you know, you'll decide what you want to do. What I do is I have used the district's water for other things and then I use bottled water and I have tanks, little tanks. I feel, I'm a bachelor now and I live in a camp trailer. So I don't need a lot of water and, but I am glad we just hooked up with the Nazarene Church and there are volunteers there for the bottled water, but they also have a, I think it's a 1,500 gallon tank. You can go by and they'll fill that up for you too. But please, talk to your friends about this and talk to the suppliers. I don't even know who the suppliers are. I just know it's happening out of frustration because we're not able to get to you and service your account to give you potable water.
There's a company called Pelican. They're out in Florida. I bought one of their tanks, the PC 1000. And they got, they have guarantees. They have a stringent, you know, as to what it does, what it will do and how long. You can spend the $4,000 with Pelican and a $500 a year testing if you want for, the Pelican is under $1,000 for the 1,000. They have a smaller unit if it's just a couple of people and it's like about 600 bucks and they'll ship it to you.
Well, thank you for your information. You know more than I do, that's for sure.
Yep.
Right. Oh, good. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. Thanks, Mark.
Okay.
Can we go to 12B?
12B. Okay, we're going to go to 12B now. Did you say 12B?
I mean, 12B, yeah. I just want to get a hand.
12B, okay.
I'm having technical difficulties, but this is a change of scope. So we hired Sammy from our RFP, which was a broad RFP for disaster recovery, project management. We didn't know the extent of what that project management would look like. As he got involved, he saw that what the project management would require, what DDW was requiring. And so to keep the contract, what the project is, he's coming back with a change of scope of the project without a change of price. So this is just a change of scope from what was the original scope of what his contract stated. And I'm trying to get.
Yeah, what pages are those on?
107.
107. Thank you.
I move to approve the change of scope of the Waterworks Engineering Contract dated March 14th, 2019 for project management services.
Okay, we had a motion. Did you hear that, Georgiana? Okay, do we have a second?
Douglas.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you. You guys are good. Okay. Thank you, Bill. Now, we're going to, now if we can go to item.
Here.
Five.
Item five.
Back, 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 back.
Okay, item five. The PID Employee Retirement Program Presentation, correct? Okay. Is there someone here tonight for that? Oh, very good. Thank you. Hi.
As soon as they're done, we'll put her up there.
I remember you now. How are you?
I'm good.
Good, thank you. Thanks for waiting. Perfect. Take your time. Yep, you're up.
So just to formally introduce myself, my name is Ornella Gross. I'm with ICMA RC. We are the 457 Plan, 401A Plan Provider. And I'm just going to provide maybe, give you just an update on some things and give you some courtesy reminders. If you have any questions, let me know, of course. So one of the things that we focus on at ICMA RC is some security in regards to the assets that participants or employees have their money vested in. And we call it a security guarantee. So what that means is that we reimburse any losses to participants whose accounts maybe has any type of unauthorized activity due to fraud and things like that. So as a financial institution, we are, I don't know how many other companies are doing that, but we have taken upon ourselves to provide that type of security guarantee. And that is one thing that I thought we need to note, that not, I think too many people know about. The plant assets are over $6 million. And one other note is that we, ICMA RC has been working closely with those participants who have been looking at the unforeseeable emergency withdrawal or hardship withdrawal during the circumstances. So that is something that we've been working on really closely and continue for those that need it. So we had an update on that this morning on a little bit about that process. And as a fiduciary of the plan, we've taken also, continues, not also, but just continuous measures on our advisory services. So while I provide the onsite visit and educational background and guidance for the participants as ways to make sure that you as a fiduciary don't have to continue to take on the risks about the investments, ICMA RC does have their own advisory group when it comes to the investment selection. So we make some thoughtful selections on who the managers are and we take a multi-manager approach with that. And that's something good to know because there is due diligence on that end with ICMA RC. On the participant end, while I provide the education part of it, they also can work with a financial consultant to work with the Morningstar platform that helps them provide you recommendations and advice. So while it is their money and it's their decision and they have to make a decision on which approach they like to take with their investments, between myself, the financial consultants, and even working with a certified financial planner, they have the resources they need to not feel like they're on their own and not to put you in a situation that you might feel that, you know, you have to make advice for them. You don't. So I think those are kind of good updates. That's an enhancement we've done is with the financial consultants if they have another resource. And other than that, the last thing I want to mention is that this is a Roth 457 Plan. So part of the education that I do is make sure that they understand the differences in how they contribute because it impacts sometimes the differences on how they make withdrawals. That's it. Thank you.
Are you having training sessions with our employees still?
Yes, yes, constant communication with Aaron and Kevin. We have this in common, that's why me and my wife are here today. We had an employee meeting and also one-on-one, kind of walking for today. Something that we're doing ongoing as I spoke to Aaron as well as Kevin is to keep me updated on when you need me to come back out here, kind of play it by ear. Last year, we did a lot more quarterly.
Well, we had. We had a few problems in the meantime we're working.
Oh, yes, no, absolutely. And therefore I left it open with, to let you know when the meeting's done or any of the other.
Kevin?
Because I've been aware of some of them.
What is the responsibility of the directors? We have several new directors. They should.
Yeah, so I'll just give you a background on our retirement. We're not in pairs. We're all 457, 401. The district contributes 12% of the employees, or 9% of the employees' wage into their 457 and then they have a 3% match on top of that. So the 3% match from our standpoint has vesting, so that goes into a 401A. Their 3% goes into the 457. So at the end of the day, you have 3% in a 401A, 12% in a 457, and then any additionals that they want to put on top would go into the 457. That's all managed through ICMA. So the board's fiduciary responsibility is to have this, have somebody come and give you an update on the plan and to have somebody like this who is selecting the funds for the employees to select from, to make sure they're meeting benchmarks, that there are a good variety of funds and that those funds are well-maintained from a management standpoint. So we, when we signed up with ICMA, we actually did an outside consultant to actually look at the funds and rate the funds based on their ranking. So there was kind of a double check. So your fiduciary responsibility is truly that, to make sure the fund is being, or that the money's being managed correctly. But it's not to go and make sure everybody's investments are what you think they should be, right? That's where you have that professional. So offering that service to them and giving them that opportunity to come in and talk to somebody, to have somebody on the phone, is that's your fiduciary responsibility too and to provide education to them. So we were meeting all of those fiduciary responsibilities. We met them all today, actually. We had education in the morning. We had an opportunity for somebody to come meet with a representative on their own through the day and afternoon and now you're having your briefing in the evening.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
What's your general take on the tenor of the employees? Do you think that they're feeling a little more confident now? I mean, you came on board after the change and.
It's what I've heard from multiple employees. They've come up, which has been very flattering. They have said they're very happy that ICMA RC is back. I started with ICMA RC back in, I think, September 2013. Paradise started to become part of my territory that I work with and, you know, I got to hear the story of how it kind of went back and forth. But coming back is what I mostly heard from employees, that they're really happy about that. And I think mainly because it's that email on their main point of contact. I mean, nobody can email me or call me and I will return their calls and emails. And I think more than anything, it's that level of, I've heard a lot today of communication and service. And even with our communication, even with the emails and phone calls, even with the way we communicate in regards to the engagement of the plan. Sometimes, just to give you a little background, when I sit down with an employee, I will review what their account access looks like, which not too many people take the time to do that. And that's mainly because we consider that a tool for financial wellness because we have incorporated things in there on the technology side as well as on the advisory side. So it becomes a financial wellness and we welcome it to that. So we have all that in our plan. Yeah, of course, for those that enjoy using their phone more, they have the mobile app and the text access as well. So there's multiple touchpoints that they have with their, with their money.
We were with a different firm and that really got screwed up and we're very happy when we got back to ICMA and everything has been running very smoothly and no problems and employees are pleased.
If you might too.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for.
Just one question. Does the reduced number of employees threaten the plan at all? Do you have to have a minimum number or anything?
No.
Okay. It's not, there's no minimum.
No, and so you know, we continue to work with employees. For those that want to stay in the plan, we continue to work with them even in retirement. So it's not just while they're working, but it's even through retirement. And we, and many times, there's a different approach to how they're going to handle the income that they want to withdraw from their. I would say, especially here in a place like this, there is a major solution that's in the plan that provides a guaranteed income for them. And so we help them understand how they can structure that to meet their needs, if that's a requirement, but.
I think we had a plan one time, that's why I asked, you had to have a minimum participation type thing?
Oh, no, no. No, I mean.
Nothing like that, okay.
No, and I don't think you really would have to worry about that here because one of the goals in regards to that, and that's also a fiduciary question there, is that's considered plan leakage from our training standpoint when we work with plan sponsors. And we can also cater our education materials to be around targeting people who, not people directly, but the plan if that's the education approach on how to talk to employees about understanding what options they have when they retire. So even though we kind of do these morning seminars where we review how the plan works, the truth is, we can always do an educational topic, bring out the CFP, and it's more about income planning, it's more about Medicare topics, social security topics. So it helps to keep the employees in your plan even if they separate you from employment.
Very good. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you hanging in there tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I've totally forgot where we're at now, so.
We're at.
We're at item three.
Three.
We're at three?
Three.
Yes.
Okay.
Who did rule call, right?
Approval Consent Calendar, okay. Okay. Is there any questions about the consent calendar?
I have none.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. A second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I need to abstain though because I wasn't a part of the minutes from the last meeting.
Very good.
Abstained.
Okay, so we're at four? Oh, no, we passed four, okay. Oh, no, we passed four, okay. Six, are we at six?
Yeah, six.
Six, okay. Facilities report.
You've pretty much got it. Yeah, we are gonna start the preparation of that plan. We've had, we just had a discussion for the last two hours before the meeting of even optimizing that plan itself and taking advantage of certain thought processes that we can get standing structures into water quicker. So we're gonna do kind of a pilot test to see what kind of results we get back on standing structures going forward and see how quickly we can lift this do-not-drink-do-not-oil order off of those standing structures. And the thought process is to really look out into the future of what PID looks like and what the Town of Paradise looks like, and try to make efficiencies with the standing structures, make efficiencies with new construction, but then also maybe get on a path that we're doing the construction or the fix of the system as the town rebuilds, right? So we're in lockstep with the town. Therefore, then, we can then use our own forces to do a lot of the construction, which then keeps reimbursements coming into the district for our own labor cost. And we're stretching out that funding for a longer period of time so that we can then get a customer base back or get a different game plan going forward as a financial game plan, but we're kind of augmenting our revenue with FEMA reimbursement. So that's what we're looking at, kind of doing, is trying to get the standing structures as quickly as possible, look at the construction and the new rebuild as quickly as possible, and then as the town slowly rebuilds, then we're in lockstep with them as we're going forward, and then we can use our own forces and our own, so maybe not having to go out with this big contract labor and forces to come in and just blow everything out that we might be able to kind of work together as the town rebuilds. So we're really trying to augment and really focus in on utilizing FEMA for multiple purposes, and one of it is kind of revenue replacement for the district to augment off of that salaries and benefits. Anything that, when you're working in FEMA, anything that's a permanent work is you can use your own forces for it. So you use your forces, they pay regular time benefits, your cost of your equipment, all of the things that you would normally charge out to a customer or charge out to a job, they reimburse for. So those are the things that we're really trying to focus on using our own forces for that.
The water thing for trucks?
Yeah.
You mentioned a little bit earlier in the meeting, and I talked to Bill Taylor, and he said it was held up with FEMA, or you're trying to get money for it or something?
Two portions of it. One is, we have secured the land for it, so to bring in a large potable tank for trucks to fill up. We're still working through FEMA to make sure that that tank is going to be a reimbursable expense for standing structures. But I think we're at the point where we're might be jumping off that bridge and then kind of forcing FEMA's hand a little bit and not waiting for their decision, because we seem to be kind of always behind the curve when it comes to that.
Yeah, I was watching the trucks, there's more trucks doing that service and more tanks going in. People are putting it in themselves. I even had somebody call me, I think, two days ago, asking about how they could get a tank from PID on their property. And I said, "Well, I don't, we'll talk about it Wednesday night, but I don't think the tanks are available." And...
Yeah, you can see where the shift was. The tank, the tank option was a good option, but it just took a long time, and we knew time was of the essence, so we looked to shave that time off, and we feel like that we can achieve those goals much sooner.
Yeah, I really thought the updated plan was a tremendous improvement overall. I'm hoping it gets better, especially the timeline.
Yep. There's efficiencies that are gained every single day we look at it.
Yeah. Some people are asking, "How about water for businesses?" Because the grocery stores up here have put in large tanks, and they're having the tankers come up from Chico. I hate to see Cal Water selling our customers water, their truck, when we get that thing fixed so that they can fill the trucks up up here.
So remember, the priority of the plan incorporates those main trunks, and those main trunks are the business corridors. So those main trunks will be our first clearing, and we'll do that with our own forces and through the pilot system, pilot process, and that's where we'll lift those businesses and have the service available to those businesses.
Yeah, we're gonna have a meter on that thing, right? And sell water? Yeah? I'm big on meters and selling water. That's our business. We gotta get some cash flow going.
I think we can probably, as soon as we lift the...
Kevin, did Sammy say that when the town, when someone pulls a building permit to town now, it's linked, it's gonna populate his database? Did he say that?
Yeah. He's got, he's got a link to the database of the town building.
Okay, great.
So that will be incorporated into his plan.
Yeah.
And those, every time a building permit is pulled, that property becomes a standing structure.
Cool.
Anything else you have for the facility up to him? Pretty, we've been, we've been meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting.
Yeah, it's big on you.
Yeah, I'd like to get the report back that we used to have on the field service gym, on all the different leaks you were fixing and so forth in the district. You know, we used to have a couple of pages that said what you guys had accomplished for that month, and because people, you know, the 72-hour thing, since everybody's gone now, going, "Hey, that works fine, except we have all these leaks, folks," you know?
Well, we're gonna have a report, we're gonna have a report from Sammy weekly, so...
And it'll include...
Yeah, it's gonna include, yeah.
And I'll contribute to that, too, with Sammy, because everything that we're collecting, Sammy's collecting, and we're analyzing all of that, right?
I'd just like the board to get the information if we can.
Yeah, for sure.
I don't think the public asks those questions, but I know I do. And people that talk, you know, and you've got a taste of some of the rumors tonight, you know? Some of them are really fantastic.
I'd be glad to do it. A lot of the work that we're gonna be doing is actually right under, and Kevin just alluded to it, is the pilot. And actually, we've already started some of that work, and I gained great ground tonight, as a matter of fact, Kevin. So we'll be making fast headway tomorrow. But some of the things that we've talked about are already underway, and in the next probably two weeks, we're gonna learn a great deal of information that Sammy's been yearning for. So, but we've learned what we need to look for, and now we'll find that, and then we'll find that we need to look for something else. So, but that's all part of the process. Both of you, I hear ya, and I'll keep...
I'm not, I know what we've gone through, and we're starting to get organized again, but I'm asking for the reports we used to get, and I'm glad to see we have our financials tonight and so forth.
Thanks.
Actually, a really good point, Kevin, if you don't mind me saying, because the guys and the people I think here are looking for normalcy, our employees are looking for normalcy, and so the more we get back to normal operations, and I noticed it in the courtyard, is that when we got back to a more normal kind of, this is what we're doing in the morning, this is where you're going, this is it, it, those spirits came up. This is...
Coming in the door every morning and not knowing what's gonna happen is, yeah.
Right, and to have that fun ahead, and with now, especially with this, and we got to a point about five weeks ago where it was, here's what we're doing tomorrow, it may change in the morning, but this is the idea, and it really more or less stayed. And now that we're doing the pilot, it's really going to be, we know what we're doing ahead of time. So it's nice to have that.
We got some, we had an employee quit in the office, so we were down to one customer service rep, accounts payable, and utility billing person, all.
Who quit?
And so we have gotten help in, in the office. So we have two new people in the office that are helping out on a temporary basis. We have a person who we look to hire as a customer service rep that we offered the job on November 7th to, that we then pulled the offer after November 7th because, November 8th, because we had no idea about going forward. We reached back out to her, and she's actually going to take the position, so that, and she's an excellent candidate. Ross has been filling in in a, in every operation of the office, two weeks into the job, and I think he knows more about customer service than I do at this point. And so he's been doing a great job. Georg Anne's been doing customer service, and so everybody's just been jumping back and forth. It's been crazy in the office. But I think we're starting to kind of get some reinforcements in there. We're gonna look for some temporary labors to help augment the staff up at the yard. They've lost over 10, what'd you go, seven people? Seven or eight people up there since the fire? And they're running pretty ragged, so we're gonna try to get some help up there. So we're trying to augment our labor with some of these temporary labors and then see what kind of permanent work we need to go forward with, so. That's it from a labor standpoint.
I just had one question.
Yeah.
I don't, are you, do you have an EAP program at all?
Yeah.
And so have you reached out to that provider to see if they could do any support work with the employees so that you quit the bleeding? The workforce retention issue is significant to every aspect of the recovery?
Yeah, we reached out to them very long, probably need to reach out to them again to have them come back out and give a kind of a sit-down. EAP, Employee Assistance Program.
Both of you, please stand, talking to the mic. I'm the guy that's hard of hearing, and I'm all the way over here, too, so, and I don't read lips very well.
Sorry, do you want me to repeat it?
Huh?
Do you want me to repeat it?
No.
Okay.
So we do pay into an EAP program. It is available to employees. So EAP is an Employee Assistance Program. It offers counseling in all aspects, financial, legal, and offers, I think, the counseling and then, but our insurance offers counseling to counseling appointments, so, but they will do group counseling, too. So we had them, I think we had them scheduled to come out, and that was the day of the flood. Do you remember when, after the, so I don't think they ever made it out, to be honest, and then, but we need to ask them back in, so. And then we're working with the county health department to maybe get some assistance from the county through this process, too, to make sure that there's some available sources out there for that, too. We have volunteers coming in, that's a good point. We have volunteers coming in Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, volunteers, 35 individual, or 30, a group of 35 coming in to do surveys for us all around town. So what they're gonna do is walk around town and they're to do surveys on standing structures or occupied, or structures that have the ability to be occupied, and then they're gonna have a list of questions they're asking those individuals so that we can have data coming back, so that we can use that data to help augment the plan, to give the plan a little more prioritization of where we want to make sure that we're going.
Occupied trailers, too? I've just beat on that ever since I got...
You got his address, right?
We actually had that discussion, and we are going to, and we're going to knock on the occupied trailers.
Okay.
There you go.
Hopefully their debris is...
I thought we were.
...living on the property.
Why not?
Yeah. We won't go there.
Yeah.
We can, but we're talking.
Yeah. Okay, I think, I think you kind of covered staff reports, too, didn't you, Kevin?
Just rolled right into it.
Well, I'll get back to you on the occupied trailers, if we're knocking on the doors. I'll talk to our individual who's heading up that.
Okay.
Somebody heading it up, even?
Cal OES.
Good.
So you kind of already did the staff report, right?
Reports, community relations update. I'll kind of give a briefing on that. We are becoming a media hot topic. NPR, National NPR was up here, did a story on us. SACB is gonna run a story on us Sunday, I believe. Will be the headline Thursday on Action News. They got, they had an interview with me, but they're gonna, we're doing, Cal OES is actually doing filming for them tomorrow with our crews to go out and film them doing the work of the sampling, and then they're gonna share that information with the media so that the media can use that. So we'll be on Action News. Obviously, Action News was here today. So we're becoming a hot topic, definitely, with the news organizations, trying to stay out in front of it. I know that a lot of people get their information from there. The plan was shared with the news organizations, so they know what the plan is even before it was presented to the board, so, but they were gonna wait for the board to adopt it before they ran with it, so that's why Thursday was the option.
I gotta do this. There're not gonna be any screw-ups like there was with The Post here a month or so, all right?
I can't, if I could write the article for The Post, I would, but, no, I think that there's, this will be, well, NPR, it was a, it was a report, and I felt that was pretty well-done. I have a feeling the SACB will be pretty well-done, so I think that, and then for television, it's pretty easy, because they're taking soundbites for myself, so it's pretty easy to control that.
The NPR report already aired, is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, it did.
I'm sorry, I gave that to you.
You switched it.
Yeah. Maybe you can switch it with another chair.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the treasures report.
Why haven't you given it to the treasures?
We haven't, we haven't gone to it yet.
I know, I don't even want to look. I'd looked at it, I read it, and I'm going, "It's 10 o'clock, and we're still going, we've still got a bunch of others."
Well, how about this, are there any questions about the treasures report? Are there any questions? Anybody have any questions?
I'll pull it up on mine, because I...
I want to thank you for putting it together, Ross. Thank you very much.
We don't want to really take you for granted after months of him asking to have it.
Yeah, yeah, and then we just rubber stamp it, right? Okay. Now we have, now we can have them, we have a motion.
Okay, that we approve the treasures report.
I'm gonna check, I'm gonna touch on two things.
Oh, okay.
The reimbursement. So we've gotten 469 from Cal OES FEMA for reimbursements. That's an expedited PW. So we put in a, what they call an expedited PW, which means you can put in a request for a estimate, and then that estimate, basically, they'll, if they approve it, it comes down. You only have to prove out any of your costs. You just get this money as you submit reimbursement, like requests. And that's for our mutual aid. We just then put in another request for mutual aid for $300,000, so that's gonna go about to the $1 million. What you do is you put it in, and then they give you 50% kind of free money. The next 50% you have to prove out, but, and you have to prove out the 50% that you already took. But we feel like we're in a pretty good position, because all we've gotten from that expedited PW was the mutual aid. Mutual aid's really easy for reimbursement, because they, they take their invoice and they, it's almost like a contractor invoice. They don't really look at it from a scrutinized standpoint, and you don't have to go out and shop it, you know, it's their rates passed on to you. So we feel like we can prove that out pretty easily, so we're gonna continue to pull on that money for mutual aid. So mutual aid is coming from East Bay Mud. So East Bay Mud reached out to us to offer their support to us, which is enormous, from a sampling chemistry standpoint and from a mechanical piping standpoint or plumbing standpoint. So we're putting in a request to Cal Warren for mutual aid, very specific, so that we get the right people up here that we want. We're gonna use their forces to augment our forces to help with the pilot program. Then they're gonna send us reimbursement, but we already have that reimbursement set up through this expedited PW, so it's just gonna be a pass through.
Thanks, Kevin.
Their forces being East Bay Mud?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Fantastic. Okay.
I like it.
We have a motion.
Yeah, did you get a second?
We had a second, I think.
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the treasures report.
You just did.
We just did. That was the treasures report.
Oh, we approved, oh, I'm sorry, approval of checks.
Oh, okay, there you go.
I like his spirit, though.
The bills have already been paid anyhow, folks. You can't do much about them.
Any comments about the checks?
Yeah. I'll try to answer anything I can.
Any of them bounce?
No, not yet.
I'm happy.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval of checks?
We do.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes, we have a motion. Yes, we have a motion, we have a second.
Look at the total.
Okay.
It's down from five hundred thousand to two seventy-five, that's a hell of an improvement.
You bring Ross on board, he starts slashing.
All those in favor of approving the checks? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Okay.
Excellent.
Legal report.
Well, keeping with the quick theme, just a brief update, we continue the efforts to secure back funding. Dustin's working on that, I know he gave you an update on what he's been doing with the legislators. I don't have any real news in that area, other than those letters of support continue to come in and the processes moving forward.
Yeah, I talked to Dustin two days ago and he's just been, he's just been squeaky out there, right? I need the money, I need the money, in talks with the legislator, our, our, I don't know why that thing shut down. Our lobbyist is in contact with Dustin at least three times a week. He's constantly over there at the Capitol, making sure that our voice is being heard, and basically, that's what you have to do. We're hoping to get into the May Ask, is what it's called, so, we should know more here in the next couple of weeks if we're getting support on that. The problem is, is that everything gets political at this time of the year, so, and we're in kind of distance, we're out there a little bit further in, from the fire side, and this is a brand-new type of ask. No other agency has had this issue or this ask, so, we're kind of recreating something here, so, we're gonna continue doing that. I said if we, if I need to go down there anytime, I'm ready and available for me and Dustin to go down there and meet with whoever we need to give any type of presentations we need to give. I'm out giving presentations to other organizations to ask for the support, so, I talked to AW, or Aw, AW, Cal Nevada, AWWA, I gave a talk to them in a full, a full room, again, asking for that support. So, other agencies are out there supporting us through that. I'll be giving a talk to Aqua and asking for those agencies to give us support, so, there's, we're constantly out there, we know that we need that list of supporters and that stack of letters, it helps give us that muscle to get this through the legislature, so. And then, we are reaching out to the feds. Diane Feinstein has money's available for water infrastructure, that we're gonna reach out to her to see if we can get on her radar for fixing the dam and for that infrastructure out there, to ask for these big federal funds to come through. But, the other thing too, is that what we've heard, and you might know more than me, is that legislators have a big influence on FEMA. And where the state doesn't have too much legislative pressure for the Cal OES side, but the legislators on the fed side have a lot of pressure on FEMA. So, if you run into an issue with FEMA and you have a legislator that can say, no, this isn't gonna work for us, it changes quickly. Yeah. So, we're gonna reach out to Feinstein and to Harris and to Lamolfa to make sure that they know our situation. Right now, we don't need them to go yell at FEMA, but as soon as we do need them, they need to know our story and who we are and what we're doing. So, we're gonna reach out to them to make sure that we're face-to-face with them, so they understand the struggles we're going through.
Do you need anything from us, from the board formally, to AWWA or Aqua to get this thing, because?
Aqua's already supported it, they have a letter already in, and their ledge, their ledge committee is actually supporting it.
Okay.
We have support from the state contractors, we, the state water contractors, which is a large, large organization, we have support, I believe, Dustin was saying he thought he got support from Matt?
Hi, the last I heard, it was almost anyone that was asked was...
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
Oh, great.
East Bay Mud, all the big, big, big water agencies.
Hesitation, there's, okay, good.
All the heavy hitters are responding.
That's what we wanna hear. Perfect, thank you. Okay, let's see, where are we at now, are we on?
Twelve C.
Twelve C, that's right. Okay.
Okay, this is a memorandum of, of understanding or an agreement with South Feather Water and Power. Remember at the beginning, we had an agreement with them for mutual aid that Dustin put together? There was a clause in there that had an issue that said FEMA re, uh, we won't, South Feather and Power won't get reimbursed unless FEMA reimburses the district. And that's a complete red flag to FEMA that says, well, we don't need to reimburse you, 'cause they're not asking for it unless we reimburse you, so, they're obviously giving you their labor force for free. So, what this is, is it actually is a, is a, taking that one out and putting this one in to allow them to bill us for those services, so that we can then bill FEMA for those services, so they're not out of pocket, because it got to a point where they were sending four or five guys up here and they're sending them for free and they're still paying them. So, this is a, an agreement that's an after-disaster agreement that allows us to go back to the beginning of the disaster and ask for reimbursement for their labor, for FEMA to reimburse us for that.
FEMA's gonna be okay with us going back on this like we're doing?
This memorandum is actually for that purpose.
Oh, okay.
It's for a after-disaster memorandum to go back to the previous disaster.
Okay, alright.
Because a lot of times, what people do is the disaster comes and they call everybody they know to come up and help, but they don't have a, they don't have an agreement in place at that time, so, that's what this is for.
Okay. Great. Alright. Do we have a motion to?
I move to approve the memorandum.
Okay, great, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
D. Cal. Procurement.
D.
E is the next one.
E, we're on twelve E.
So, this one is a FEMA thing too. So, Sam, we went, I went through the FEMA training and this never came up, which I was just shocked. And then, Sammy and Michael had one-on-one FEMA training from, from a procurement standpoint. They had their FEMA trainer look at our purchasing policy to look at it from a critical eye from the FEMA standpoint, because FEMA has levels of criteria of purchasing policy. If it's under a certain amount, then you, all you have to do is follow your procurement policy, but if it's over a certain amount, you have to go by the federal standards, which was a pain in the butt, but. So, under that one level, they had their FEMA trainer look at it, and there was a clause in there that wasn't, that they basically said, if it's not, if you don't have this clause in there, you're not gonna get reimbursed.
Yeah.
And the clauses, the new clause which say it's, you won't duplicate or something.
That's right.
What is it, Emily?
The language just requires you to give to consideration to the specific item you're looking to procure and whether it would be best to consolidate or separate or lease instead of purchase, essentially to make sure that you considered all other perhaps less expensive options prior to acquiring an item.
So, we added that to it.
Okay.
And that's the only change.
Okay, good. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve as drafted twelve point two point two point one.
Very good, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
I got a question on the claim for vehicle damages and the other one, claim for water damages. Both of them have retracted names and information in them. That seems to be the new term with the federal government, you know? But, I, maybe you've made it more dramatic in the paperwork now, I don't know, I just don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, we've, we've always redacted the names.
Sorry, I forgot the information, the certification.
Who did the recreation on the auto accident? The photos and the, things done really well.
Jim, Jim, you did that, didn't you?
Yeah. Really well done. I used to do that and, that's like kudos.
And that was a formal process, so now, the FBI, the Cal, the response to the claim or the agent.
So, are these, these have to be done separately?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion for the claim for vehicle damages?
I have them and I know, recommend it formally.
Okay.
I'm not there yet.
Page one fifty-six.
Is it one fifty-six?
One fifty-six.
Okay, I'm back. I move to reject the claim for vehicle damages filed on behalf of USAA Casualty Insurance Company and approve the letter of merit rejection for submittal to ACWA Joint Powers Insurance Authority to process and respond the claim, AC double A stroke JPIA, claim number nineteen stroke oh four four six.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Okay, claim for water damages.
And this is the same process?
It's the same, the same, uh...
One eighty-two, isn't it?
Page, page one eighty-two.
One eighty-two. Okay, do we have a, make a motion there?
So, I move to reject the claim of water damages recorded as ACWA stroke JPIA, claim number nineteen stroke zero five one four, and approve the letter of merit rejection for submittal to ACWA Joint Powers Insurance Authority to process and respond to the claim.
Well, well done, Dan.
There you go.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion passes.
The lake committee had a meeting yesterday morning and we discussed the opening of the lake, which we were told was already in action, and, which we're, I was happy with, 'cause I, I've been pushing for the last month or so to get the lake open, and Greg came a little late and he shared with us, and that's the reason I, Kevin had to go to a meeting in the other room. So, I asked Greg to come tonight, I'm sorry it's so late, Greg, but, to talk about the use of the lake, he's, he explained to us after Kevin had left about some drownings at the lake and other things in the history, because we were talking about opening the lake up to more recreation than we do now, and I thought it'd be good that Greg shared this information. I was basically against opening up anymore, we have the kayaks, we have fishing and the rules like electric boats and so forth on the lake to keep it from being polluted, and I've been against paddle boarding and the board had considered that in the past and turned it down, and so, I just, if Greg could, he's usually not bashful like this.
Oh, I'm not gonna, no, no, I know I like to talk. Well, you know, since November eighth, we closed the lake because of obvious reasons. We've left it closed till tomorrow. At any rate, we, of course, we used to have kids fishing days, when people, compared to that, it was a popular thing. My concern, I'm gonna be retiring, I've been there thirty-five years, I'm gonna be retiring at the end of June and then moving on, my grandson, and to just give you my opinion, I have my thirty-five years and my observations, what we have is a small lake, okay, small lakes are deceiving, very deceiving. I've had two people drowned on me, one was a twenty-four-year-old, her four-and-a-half-year-old daughter watched her drown, it was a horrifying situation. The other, we had an older fellow, he had a heart attack and he drowned. The other six or seven that I've saved, all said the same thing, I thought I could make it, that's their fit, that's their estimate, like they, you know, what's the last word that redneck says before he dies? Hey, y'all, watch this, there's one, so, it's always been one of those situations where they thought they could make it to the island. When I heard, you know, Parks and Rec's gonna take over, I think that's a good thing, I certainly don't have any problem with that. I think Parks and Rec do a great job in what they do, however, it's the, it's the, it's a security situation that I have concerns with, and, and they allow, talking about allowing swimming and swimming wide open, not a swimming beach, which I've always kind of, you know, thought, hey, you know, no reason we couldn't have a swimming beach somewhere, you know, something like that. Never came to fruition, I hadn't pushed for it. I see something that like that might be valuable, might be viable, but I really would strongly suggest that the district thinks strongly about, about allowing swimming in particular. And I heard, oh, we know we've got liability insurance. Yeah, see, I, I wasn't comfortable knowing that twenty-four-year-old baby that drowned was, that didn't make me feel any better. We had a twenty-four-year-old that lost her life in five minutes, that's not for me, you know, I didn't know there was swimming out there. Dogs, you know, there's talk about dogs, horses, you know, there's all these talks, but I just hope the board keeps in mind that that's our drinking water, that's the bottom line, that's the most important thing. There's always a prime directive, protecting the water, everything else is secondary, recreation, whatever, well, it's always been secondary. Also, it's, I've been kindly referred to as the caretaker, and that's true, for the most part, I'd say sixty percent of our job, my executive employee, is caretaking, taking care of the park, taking care of the land, taking care of whatever. There's, the other factor is the rule enforcement, and that's about thirty percent. And then, there's about ten percent that's law enforcement, and there's a difference there. In fact, I've had a little trouble with Jason over the years, he's, he's a little, he's a little bit like Barney and a little less like Andy, you know what I mean? I would have to explain to him, swimming's not against the law, it's against our rules, there's a difference. Now, polluting, fishing game regulations, that's different, now, now, we're talking laws, you know, so, that's, that's a difference. And unfortunately, we've had homeless situations, we've got motorcycle situations, we've got camping and mining situations, just took care of four of those in the last two weeks on our property in between the reservoirs. It's always gonna be a hotspot. The sheriff will not go down there, the sheriff will not leave his vehicle, the sheriff doesn't want to leave his vehicle, you have to walk to these places, you have to go to these places. These are the things that I do, the patrolmen have done over the years, that, I don't know, Parks and Recreation is either aware, know that this is part of the job, know that this is part of the situation. Again, if there was someone to fall back on, oh, we just call the cops, they're not gonna be there, this is a priority situation. With our homeless, some of the boys I've had with you, Jason in particular, really have to look, they need to be arrested, they're not gonna arrest a trespasser, it's not gonna do it, they don't have room in the jail right now, you know, they're letting people out because they don't have room. They're not gonna arrest nonviolent offenders, especially somebody who's just started packing or a little bit of littering, it's not gonna happen. So, those are things that the district has to handle on their own, and we need to make sure that we have that process. I don't know what that is. Also mentioned was the, I live in, I'm in company land, I've lived there for thirty-five years, and I have mold on, even the old one up on hill and the one that I have now. It would be who the district, hey, district employee lived there, doesn't have to be the lake patrolman anymore, he has, always been a part of my job, so, I got real cheap rent and paid at a level that was not, you know, like a crew leader, and I've always accepted that and felt that that was very fair. There's no reason you couldn't charge a regular, a rent employee, a regular reasonable rent for living there and then, they would be there on a standby basis. They're not, Parks and Rec's taking care of it, but stuff that happens at night, hundreds and hundreds of times over the year, believe me, it would be a serious mistake for the district to think that it's all gonna be hunky-dory, we get a guy that comes in there once a week and it's not gonna happen. What I did, our, the old mold on, got mold in, so, we have to move out. I was in a motel with my daughter and two, two dogs for about a week. The paper did a story, wrote a story about them, local lake to call them, tested positive for mold, blah, blah, blah. The next day, our boat was gone. This is how fast people will steal everything they have up there.
Thinking you weren't there.
Tag everything, if you've ever known, been to Paradise Lake, have you ever noticed, there's nothing tagged. You know I'm talking about tagging? Nothing, not one rock, not one tree, nothing. That's not because of anything I did, it's because of the presence of someone there, that's what I believe, so, that's my two cents, three cents, train ask.
Thank you, Greg, no, I, we appreciate that.
And if anybody has any questions, we're gonna have to get out.
We are, we are working on an agreement with Paradise, Parks and Rec for this potential takeover of the recreation facilities there, so, and they are, one of the members of our committee is Board of Director on PRPD and he's very supportive, so.
Yeah, the only, the only problem with it is that they have to come up with some grant money or something else. They're recovering and they've got, they got some extra money to see them through, but they don't really have the funds, they would like to take over, but we have the botanical garden, which comes under the lake committee too, and that's been going on for some time, and at first, they were able to buy access to the proposed Lakeside Park and Botanical Garden together. It's on PID property, there's a memo of understanding with Park and Rec for, I don't think there's any end to it, is there? There is no time.
It's either a fifty or a hundred yearly, ninety-nine, ninety-nine, yeah, that's pretty good.
Yeah, so, they're responsible for, and, but, again, because of the disaster and everything, they right now don't have the funds, but they want to develop that park because of the people in Megalia will be the big beneficiaries of it for their children and everything to have a play park. And then, I managed to squeeze in a botanical garden thing, but the, these are the things we're trying to cooperate with them. thing. But the, these are the things, we're trying to cooperate with them. We've even talked about trails between the two reservoirs and it looks like they will have no trouble in doing that kind of work. In fact, the manager there now is, has developed trails when he was in charge of Bidwell Park for several years. And he's got the skills and the knowledge to do that where we'd have some hiking trails between Megalia Reservoir or the dam up to Paradise Lake connecting the system. And there's been volunteers in the community that would help with that project. So, including the Butte County RCD. It would hook up with that too? So, those are the things we've talked about over the years, I think, since, to let you know what's been going on. And I'm glad, thank you for opening the lake up. We got new fish and hopefully tomorrow you'll have more fishermen than you've seen all winter. You just finished what today?
Before you leave tonight, you explained to Russ who Andy and Marnie are.
Why don't you just whistle the theme song and see if it triggers anything?
Happens to be a certain age.
Yeah. Alright.
There you go.
Thanks again, Greg, for all your work up there. We really do appreciate it. It's been great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Okay, let's see, where are we at now? Director's comments. How about Bob? Do you have any comments you'd like to?
I think we heard tonight from a lot of people. I was especially interested in the comment about bank loans. We talked about that before. People getting bankrupts without any drinking water. The other thing I would raise is, why would AAA insure your house if the fire hydrants don't even work in your neighborhood? And people getting fire hydrants is something, I think we have something to do with that because they're going to pepper, start peppering you with questions, the triple As of the world, saying, when do we get the water for the fire hydrants? When do we get water for the...
We already do.
Building sprinklers.
Fire hydrants are alive.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this is the kind of question they're going to ask you. If houses are now required to have fire sprinklers, are they going to work? Are there going to be water to them? Is AAA going to insure these houses? And I think homeowners, potential homeowners need to know that, you know, this is, this is what's going on.
Actually, I don't think it hurt anything if benzene was in the sprinkler system.
Well, here's what I'm trying to get to, Bill. When they purge the lines and they're testing them and the fire happens, somebody's going to say, how come there wasn't any water in your fire sprinklers or your fire hydrant?
Well, and...
That's the kind of, and that's the kind of...
Back on us?
Let me make my comment here. You can say anything you want.
I usually do.
I know. But what I'm trying to make the point here is, we have a responsibility to answer those questions.
Oh, sure.
And, you know, I don't know if it's going to satisfy them. If I'm buying a house here, I want to know I'm going to have fire insurance. I talked to a guy a couple of weeks ago sitting next to him on a plane. He says, my fire insurance went up $7,000 in Grass Valley. He says, I'm my own fire department now. I bought a tank and a fire hose.
Oh, my gosh.
He says, I can't afford $7,000.
We, we had water pressure problems years ago in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
And this actually happened to a man. He had to put in his tank, had to put in the fire hose before the town would give him everything. That thing eventually rotted away just from non-use. Sat there for years and changed hands about three times.
Well, I'm just saying, all this stuff may come up. People are going to have to make that decision.
Well, why don't we put it on the agenda then before we...
Well, I just think it's a matter of public information just to cover ourselves about, this is what we're doing.
You got that?
To put that on the agenda?
No. I'm looking at Sammy.
Oh.
From a question and answer standpoint, I mean, it's just a public... That, that we're planning on, that as the plan goes forward, we're expecting to be out in front of the building so that these issues of fire sprinklers and all this should be solved by that.
Yeah, that would be the plan. I think one of the things that the town and us are going to have to agree on is what happens if somebody finishes their construction. They have, they're getting construction water from PID. They're using that to, they're stuck in order to grow their own construction. They finish their construction, they go to connect and we, we either have to be able to look at their service and determine whether it's potable and make it possible before they connect, or are we going to allow someone to connect a new structure to an unknown, a connection of unknown potability and operate under our current advisory? And, you know, I think that's, there's a missing party here, which is the city or the town building official to talk about that.
Yeah, I think the main question I would ask was AAA, because I'm trying to make a buck, is when my client moves into his house and I write him a fire policy, is that water going to be turned off again?
Right.
That's a simple question.
I agree.
Is that testing done with that neighborhood that he's in?
The thing that I've heard is that you have to have running water, is what somebody said tonight. Water pressure, the water quality. And then, you know, that person has to make a decision. If we're not done yet to the point where we can tell them, yes, that's potable, are they, you know, going to take the risk of connecting to it and potentially, if there is contamination in their service ladder, contaminating their new pipe?
Yeah.
I think from a fire insurance standpoint, if there's water there, the sprinklers are charged and, you know...
But my question is going to be, are you going to turn it off again to retest it?
Well, when you go to test it, we are, the way we're doing is, they'll always have water going to their house.
Okay.
That was part of, that's part of the sort of change in how it is. We're not shutting anybody off. We're providing them a temporary supply during the testing. But they are going to have to make a, somebody may have to make a decision. And maybe we decide as utility, if somebody says, hey, I'm ready to pull my CBO for my new house, that we're going to go out there and immediately test that ladder or at least make some decision about the potable, at least the ladder, if not surrounding ladders in the neighborhood.
My understanding is some activated charcoal things have been installed just because of that, just what you...
I can see Bill now as a homeowner just saying, well, you know, it's only $3,000. They just put $300,000 into this new house.
Broke down on the construction.
Put that on there to protect the house.
There's already a variation of all of those things happening, right? So, contractors are putting in tanks. And I hear you talking about AAA and I get that, but I know that there are different stories and it almost seems to vary even from agent to agent within the same insurance company.
Well, I expected to.
So, there's a mixed bag. And I know that the town has already addressed us earlier, but we still have conversations to have.
Just to make sure we're not speaking out of turn for that.
Right, right.
The information I got this morning, to give you an idea, I just entered escrow this morning on a house. The insurance agent asked, is there running water? He didn't care if it was potable. And are the hard hydrants in the neighborhood charged? And they said yes. And I called Culligan and they're installing a $3,650 filtering system. And the house hasn't been charged since PID shut the meter off. And when the filter...
Already got it on the list.
When the, when the filter gets installed, it'll get turned on for the first time and we'll go forward. And that's also representative of the trust and faith I have in the staff.
Yeah.
I have no hesitation to live in Paradise and NPID. So, that's where I'm at. And those are the questions they were asking. The insurance, we checked with Mercury is who my insurance agent was, which is a subsidiary of Farmers. Checked with Farmers. They both said, no, we won't write your house. What we end up with is CalSafe, which is kind of like no insurance insurance. But that seems to be the only one that'll write in the Town of Paradise as of this morning with making, I think it was six calls. Yeah.
That's reassuring.
Yeah.
No.
Thank you, Bob. Dan, you want to continue?
No, that's my spiel.
Oh, that was it?
Thank you for the firsthand info. That's good.
Bill, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I'd like to welcome our newest director. I'm actually happy that she's a lady because I think we need a little lady on the board. And you add just what a lady does, I mean lady, to the board and your influence. And I thank Sammy for doing a good job and being so patient with the people that were asking you, some of them some pretty questions and one guy wouldn't shut up. But you weathered the storm and you got through it. And I think you did a great job.
Shelby, would you like to?
I just want to say how much I appreciate you taking a chance on me. And I really look forward to being an active participant on the board. I, I think I shared in my letter, our house survived. And it's a long road. And we, we are taking it day by day.
And I want to thank you for applying and thank you for accepting. I appreciate that. And I do want to say thanks to Sammy and Michael and your crew for putting together that recovery plan. Looks great. Really does. And you presented it very well tonight. I appreciate that. Took all the questions like Bill said. And, you know, the other thing is, you know, we only had a few responses on our RFP for this particular function. And, you know, I really appreciate you guys taking on the challenge. It's a big challenge. So, but you got to remember, you're part of our family now. So, but no, I really, really appreciate it very much.
Yeah, Michael spent a lot, a lot of our, we've worked a lot of, we spent a lot of time worrying about this and still do all night.
Yeah.
And there's another person, a firm called Sheila, who's had to work on this, like they're seeing projects and I'm a little bit scared as well. Thank you. Happy to be working with you and continuing to do our best to help work through this.
Well, thank you for being there for us. Appreciate it. Okay, I guess we can go into closed session, huh?
Yep.
Will you read the item? Will you read the item, please?
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes. Where, what, where are we at here? Okay. Public, closed session for public employee performance evaluation, government code section 57957, title, management employees. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thanks, guys.